All right, everyone. Oh, we have our student trustee. Welcome, welcome. All right, everyone. 2:04 PM, and I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. It's Tuesday, August 26, 2025, and welcome, everyone, for being here. Clerk Woodley, can you please do roll?
Yes, madam. Trustee Hall?
Present.
Vice President Mayberry?
Here.
Trustee Dr. Nicolet?
Good afternoon.
Trustee Phoenix?
Present.
President Smith?
Here.
Trustee Westlake?
Here.
Trustee Maya Hartley? And Clerk present. All present in the conference room, madam.
Awesome. Well, we love a good celebration here, and we're going to be doing more celebrating in the next item. So new Deputy Chief Eric Diamond, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? In case you're wondering, no one ever knows that I'm going to invite them to do the pledge. So I loved watching the deputy chief make eye contact with me and come on, and thank you so much for that. All right, we move on now to item 1.04, our land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their distant homes in the hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu, Washoe, Nukmu, Northern Paiute, Niwi, Western Shoshone, and Nukwu, Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for indigenous peoples, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. Thank you. That closes item 1.04 and brings us now to item 05. Those are the celebrations I was talking about. And so I'd like to welcome up our chief, Shawna Baker, who will be conducting some ceremonial swearing-in of our new deputy chief, Eric Diamond, and our new school police officer, Olek Chiz. Welcome, chief.
Good afternoon. Superintendent Ernst, members of the board, President Smith. Thank you, deputy chief. Please come. So briefly, I'd like to just give you some background on deputy chief Eric Diamond. He's a Nevada native, graduated from Reed High School in 2001, began his law enforcement career as a reserve officer in Carson City in 2008 before transitioning full-time with UNR Police in 2009. Until 2015, he attained distinction as a uniformed crime investigator. In January of 2015, he transitioned to school police, where he worked with the Worcester Campus High School and later serving as detective and patrol sergeant until he's recently promoted to deputy chief. In his spare time, he just recently became a hot air balloon pilot. So we're also very excited about that. I'm very proud of him. Okay, you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Come over, step in here. Please raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Eric Diamond.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
And the Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
And the regulations of the Washoe County School District.
And the regulations of the Washoe County School District.
Against all enemies, whether foreign or domestic.
Against all enemies, whether foreign or domestic.
And that I will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the same.
And that I will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the same.
Any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state notwithstanding.
Any.
Resolution.
Resolution.
Or law.
Or law.
Any state.
Any state.
Notwithstanding.
Notwithstanding.
Yes. And that I will faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
All duties.
All duties.
Of the office of deputy chief of police.
Of the office of deputy chief of police.
On which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And now I would like to invite deputy chief's mother, Dolores, up for the penning.
Thank you very much. I'm deeply humbled by the board and the district's confidence in me. I've truly found a home here at school police and at Washoe County School District. I'm proud of the important work we continue every day, and I'll work to tirelessly earn, maintain the trust of our department and our district and our community. I'm grateful for this opportunity and look forward to our continued success together. Like to take just a further moment to thank my family and friends who are here with me today, who keep me supported and very much alive when I'm not in uniform. And thanks very much to my mother, Dolores, Cindy, Anthony, Stephen, my aunts, my aunts Connie and Delpha. Thank you very much for your time, and I look very much forward to working together. Thank you.
Now, don't go too far because after our next ceremonial swearing-in, we're going to all take a photo with family as well.
Okay. And now I would like to invite Officer Olek Chiz up to the podium. So Officer Chiz is also a Washoe County School District graduate. He has also been a coach for the Washoe County School District and well within our community. So he's given back in many, many ways. He made the decision to enter into law enforcement and then shows that there was a better way to serve the community by working with our students and staff. So he came to us more recently, but we're very, very, very proud to have him. We've received multiple emails on the connections that he's making with our students, and that is not something that we can teach. It's something that we hope for, but it is absolutely inherent with him, and I am just absolutely so proud to have you as part of our department. Please step forward. Raise your right hand. Okay. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Olek Chiz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and the government of the United States.
And the Constitution and government of the state of Nevada.
And the Constitution and the government of the state of Nevada.
And the regulations of the Washoe County School District.
And the regulation of the Washoe County School District.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Whether foreign or domestic.
Whether foreign or domestic.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
Allegiance and loyalty to the same.
Allegiance and loyalty to the same.
Any ordinance.
Any ordinance.
Resolution.
Resolution.
Or law of any state notwithstanding.
Or any law of any state that's not withstanding.
And that I will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
All duties.
All duties.
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of the police officer.
On which I am about to enter.
Of which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Absolutely. And if I'm not mistaken, your son is going to come up and pin you. Okay? Come on up, buddy. This is a good one. And I just want to take a moment to thank the board superintendent Ernst for my privilege to be able to do this for these officers and deputy chief and for your continued support. So thank you so much.
All right, everyone, we're going to bring the meeting back to order here. So we're going to be making an agenda change. So just so everyone knows, we've now closed item 1.05 in section 1 in its entirety. We're going to pause on opening section 2 because I will be opening section 3 at this time. And so section 3 is our item for presentation, discussion, information, and/or action. And we will actually be pulling up item 3.01. Now, after the conclusion of this item, we will go back. I will reopen section 2, and we will do consent at that time. So for right now, we're going to go ahead and open item 3.01. This is the approval and adoption of the negotiated agreement between the Washoe County School District, WCSD, and the Washoe School Principals Association, WSPA, also known as WISP-A, for a term of agreement from 2025 to 2027. This is an item for possible action. And we have with us today our chief human resources officer, Doug Owen, our general counsel, Kevin Pick, and also coming up to speak with us about this will be Colby Riordan, the president of WISP-A.
Hi, good afternoon, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, trustees. I'm Kevin Pick. I'm general counsel for the district. With me is chief human resource officer, Doug Owen. We're here to present the four consideration, the tentative agreement between the Washoe School Principals Association and the Washoe County School District. Before we get into specifics regarding the tentative agreement, I just want to briefly describe this unit. And you can see up here the totals. There's 103 principals in this unit, 83 assistant principals, 92 deans, 33 central office administrators, all administrators, licensed administrators in the state of Nevada. I also want to recognize the negotiating teams for the district and WISP-A. So six members on each team, employee members. WISP-A's team, WISP-A president, Colby Riordan, Dan Kirk, Mike Martindale, Angela Flora, David Kitchen, Freeman Holbrook, and you can see the district's own negotiating team. Now, I just want to start before getting into specifics and say that it was enormously positive and collaborative negotiation. We're very appreciative to WISP-A and President Riordan in particular for her leadership and the entire WISP-A negotiating team. Again, it was very positive and collaborative. And since I just mentioned her, I wonder if she would come up and make a few remarks.
Welcome, President Riordan.
Good afternoon. Can you hear? Okay. Good afternoon, Superintendent Ernst, President Smith, and members of the board. For the record, my name is Colby Riordan, president of Washoe School Principals Association, and I'm here to speak on agenda item 3.1, the approval and adoption of the negotiated agreement between Washoe County School District and Washoe School Principals Association for the term of 2025 to 2027. On behalf of WISP-A, I want to express our appreciation for the collaborative spirit and hard work that led to the successful negotiation and ratification of our new agreement. This outcome was the result of many hours of discussion, careful listening, and problem-solving from both the WISP-A team and our partners in district leadership. At the heart of every conversation was shared a commitment to supporting our administrators so they can lead with confidence, foster thriving communities, and ultimately ensure the success of every student. While the process was not without its challenges, it demonstrated what is possible when we work with transparency, respect, and a common goal. The district's willingness to hear and value the perspectives of school leaders and WISP-A's dedication to finding solutions that benefit the entire school community were keys to our success. I am proud of the professionalism, persistence, and good faith shown by everyone at the table. This agreement reflects not only our mutual understanding of the work administrators do, but also our collective vision for the future of education in Washoe County. I want to acknowledge the WISP-A negotiations team, attorney Alex Velto, Freeman Holbrook, David Kitchen, Mike Martindale, Daniel Kirk, and Angela Flora. Without their tireless efforts, I could not stand here today. In addition, I want to acknowledge Doug Owen, Kevin Pick, Anthony Spots, attorney Anthony Hall, Jeff Bazo, Sarah Cunningham, and Lauren Ford for their ongoing collaboration during this process as well. Thank you for your partnership during the negotiations process, which allowed us to work through challenges constructively, find common ground, and reach an agreement that strengthens both our leadership and our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, with that, I do want to get into some specifics on the agreement that is before you, the tentative agreement. And it starts with it being a two-year agreement that covers the 2025 to 2027. It would start on July 1, 2025. There is a 2% cost of living adjustment for fiscal year 2026. Fiscal year 2026 is the current fiscal year. And so it would be retroactive to July 1, 2025. There's also a 2% COLA in fiscal year 2027. They'd be subject to guardrails. Now, when we talk about guardrails, it gets very specific in what the language is. It's based on general fund revenues in fiscal year 2027. If general fund revenues are over 5%, then contract would be reopened for compensation negotiation. If general fund revenue is at 4%, then there will be a 2% COLA to this group. If it's less than 4%, then they will get half of the general fund revenue increase. So if general fund revenues go up 3%, they will get a 1.5% COLA down to zero. Zero would be the floor, and it would not be able to go beneath the floor of zero in that second year, which also provides some security to the group as well, too. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Owen.
Thank you, Kevin. Doug Owen, chief HR officer for the record. And just want to reiterate the collaboration that led to the rest of these bullet points that I'll go over with the entire WISP-A negotiation team. I feel like we both had mutually beneficial outcomes that we reached through all of these bullets. So I'll cover them in brief. But as you know, we needed to incorporate the deans into this agreement and including the salary schedule. The old salary schedule didn't really fit certain individuals or certain positions, so we created a new one. And so there's two salary schedules at the bottom of that appendix, and the second one really incorporates the deans. It eliminates what we call dead zones or frozen steps, where you may get to your seventh year on the scale and then freeze for three years. We eliminated those. And then we have fewer steps. So you may get to the maximum faster than you would in previous salary schedules. Longevity was a big topic of conversation and trying to figure out, rather than a static amount, how to add that and progressively increase it every year. So whatever COLA is received by the unit, longevity will also increase by that percent. Increased isolation allowances. We previously gave out isolation allowances for Natchez and Gerlach, but we included Incline now for people that live outside of the Incline school zone, which adds some incentive for people maybe to drive up and be administrators at our Incline schools. We clarified, there's a lot of, there were previous concepts around 10, 11, 12 month and quote "non-contract days", and we really clarified this time around that everyone is a full-time employee, their year-round status, and they have different leave allotments, which introduced this new concept of discretionary time off. These days can be used typically during fall break, winter break, spring break, summer break for individuals to take time off, and those amounts are delineated in the contract. But it also consolidated eight different leave types into vacation or discretionary time off, and their vacation accruals actually went up a little bit. That allows them to get the much-needed time off after they're spending some great time with their students and get them refreshed and ready. I think one of the board members just got back from Hawaii, so I'm interested to hear how that went. We also clarified the discipline and grievance processes. You'll notice in the document, it takes up about 10 pages. It was previously 16, so we were able to consolidate that a little bit. And then we clarified overage and reduction in force, which was previously a little circular. You would just go back to overage if there was a riff, but we've just clarified that process as well. The extra days, these are days that typically your secondary schools may be required to go work a sporting event, per se, by their area superintendent, and we clarified that those need to be approved and reviewed by their area superintendent. And then finally, mileage reimbursement wasn't used that much, but we were able to remove that as part of the overall agreement. So those are the highlights that we just wanted to point out that I think did lead to some mutually beneficial outcomes and achieved both our goals and those of WISP-A.
Thank you, President Smith. Thank you, counsel Pick and chief Owen. I just wanted to take a moment to say a very genuine thank you to the leadership of WISP-A, to our own negotiations team, and indeed the collaborative spirit to arrive at very positive and productive outcomes. And it's really that spirit of collaboration that helps us move forward. I'm particularly grateful for Mrs. Riordan's leadership as president of WISP-A. And I think this is really a day to celebrate in Washoe County School District as far as moving forward and really being able to recognize the important work that our administrators do throughout the entirety of our system. And I'm just really happy that we are able to do this and able to move forward. I do see a couple other members of WISP-A, so I want to make sure I also acknowledge them. Mr. Martindale, Mr. Kitchen, I see out there. And wanted to thank you for your roles in the negotiation teams and your leadership with your members. And so just wanted to take a moment to offer a very special thanks to all that have been involved throughout these negotiations.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Ernst. I want to emphasize what a great moment this really is. We're so glad to be here with our principals, who we value so much. There is a lot to celebrate in this agreement, but one that I am particularly excited about is the elevation of deans into their rightful place, I believe, as administrators. This board took action a few years ago to place deans in all of our schools and to really elevate that role. And so we know from seeing them operate in the schools that they really are an extension and a member of the administrative team. And so I'm really glad to see them now part, and I'm glad to see WISP-A grow with them. Seeing no other lights on right now, JJ, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no cards for this item.
All right, I'll bring it back here. Vice President Mayberry.
I'll be happy to make a motion. The board of trustees, I move that the board of trustees approves and adopts changes to the negotiated agreement between the Washoe County School District and the Washoe County Principals Association for a term ending June 30, 2027.
Aye, second.
All right, I have a motion by Vice President Mayberry. I have a second by trustee Nicolet. Seeing no other lights on, it's, did you want to say anything, trustee Phoenix? Oh, no, you wanted to jump in. All right, all right. All right, well, good. I like that. I like that. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those pose nay? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much. And now we'd like to invite WISP-A up to take a photo to celebrate the moment. All right, everyone, so that closes item 3.01, and we will pause Section 3 at this time and go back and open Section 2. This is our consent agenda items. And today on consent, we have items 2.02 through 2.25, and we do not have any items that are being pulled at this time currently. Are there any comments on items 2.02 to 2.25? No? Okay, seeing none. JJ, do we have any public comment on items 2.02 to 2.25?
I have no cards items.
All right, I'll bring it back here for a motion to approve items 2.02 to 2.25.
All ready there. I move the Board of Trustees approve consent agenda items 2.02 through 2.05 and, oh, 2.02 through 2.25. I'll second that motion, Madam.
There we go. I was about to say, he laid it up! Somebody, right? Yeah, I go like, wait, he was just, I don't know the term in basketball, but I know somebody lays it up and the other person, okay, there we go. So we have a motion by Trustee Phoenix, we have a second by Clerk Woodley. Seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose nay? All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much, colleagues. And that now closes Section 2 in its entirety. We're going to go back and reopen Section 3. Again, these are our items for presentation, discussion, information, and/or action. Having already closed and completed item 3.01, we'll now go ahead and open up item 3.02. This is the presentation, discussion, and possible action to provide direction to the superintendent to activate the school naming committee in anticipation of possible changes to school names due to the consolidation and/or repurposing and/or closure of schools related to the approved facilities modernization plan. This is an item for possible action, and we welcome with us today our Chief Operations Officer, Adam Cersei, and our Chief Communications and Public Relations Officer, Michelle Anderson.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. I'll start it off, Adam Cersei for the record. Just a little background before we get into the heart of the presentation. As all of you know, we've been hard at work for the last eight years building schools, specifically nine new schools since WC-1 was passed. The first opened in 2019. We all know that, but what this slide doesn't talk about is the fact that lengthy and engaged public processes went into the intentional naming of each and every one of those, led by the School Naming Advisory Committee that we're here to talk about today. Also, as we know, the program has evolved to today a program largely of investments into our existing schools. And that really is what brought about this conversation, that that is a different animal. So we're still building and investing in our existing schools and building new ones, oftentimes on the existing campuses, but it creates potentially a new opportunity for that naming committee, one that can navigate the complex change reality for these schools and these communities while still thoughtfully honoring the legacy that those facilities and the names associated with those facilities have brought many times for generations. So to help us all orient the context of the upcoming school facility projects, I wanted to put this slide up there. We feel like it's very informative and important and really foundational. When we talk about our facility modernization plan, that's the FMP acronym, sometimes it's helpful to think of, well, first of all, this is a program that was developed with the community over the course of 2022 and 2023, and ultimately approved by the board, one that we are in the midst of executing here today and going forward, one that entails major investments to every single one of our existing school facilities for many years to come. That program of projects can largely be summarized into categories bulleted on the left-hand side. So whether we're reconstructing a school, modernizing a school, repurposing, closing and repurposing a school, or whether you can see on the right-hand side circled, long-term trade-up, those were a list of schools which, at the time, could really not responsibly be assigned a future outcome that many years into the future, we cannot know. And sometimes when you get into those neighborhoods in Sparks where there's, you know, just about a stone's throw away to the next elementary school, it's not exactly clear. So noting that those communities should expect to receive a trade-up scenario when it comes to their school facilities, the precise nature of which is still to be determined. I want to orient everybody to this kind of nomenclature. Number one, because it's foundational to the projects that we're going to be doing going forward, but also because that's how we structured kind of how we're recommending the naming committee consider these projects going forward. So just a couple other points of background. Again, if we're going to talk about the naming committee, we've got to, of course, direct ourselves back to the board policy and admin reg that govern it. These are somewhat similar to the function of the zoning advisory committee, the composition of the committee, their role and interactions with staff, the community, and ultimately advisory body to the Board of Trustees. This committee, we'll talk about more later, is, all the terms have expired, right? We have not activated this committee or had work for them to do for some time, so we'll have some recruiting to do. It's a great problem to have. Also buried within admin reg 7111, which we'll talk about later as well, is a passage that provides direct authority to the board or helps clarify that the authority for the board, rather than the naming committee, related to portions of a school or athletic facilities or any non-school facility is something that the Board of Trustees can and has recently taken, taken action to name specifically. So just a piece, some pieces of background, this is kind of a summary. This is an important tool and has served the district well in the past. It's very, it's going to be helpful, I believe, in helping our community navigate the change in front of us. It is time-consuming and it is emotional. It is not a tool to be taken lightly. These are kind of the background highlights, and again, that final passage, I'm not going to read it, but again, I think this is an important tool in us going forward, and Michelle and I have taken some time to try to frame it up in context of our upcoming CIP and give the board some recommendations here this afternoon.
Really quick, could you go to back? So this is also an opportunity, yes, one more, I think, from the one, yes, there we go. So one thing I'm really excited about with this, that I also just want to bring attention to, is that each of the trustees gets a representative. So for really all of our members, and certainly maybe some of our newer members, just like with zoning, and then also share, I believe it's with share, you get a representative for your district. We get to choose, so the board still has to adopt the nominee that we bring forward, but we are able to work within our communities and consider who applies, and we each individually have a voice in who we bring forward as well from our districts.
Thank you for that, President Smith. Michelle Anderson for the record. So as Mr. Cersei mentioned, we broke this up into five different scenarios that align with the FMP projects and also highlight past practice. So for scenario one, this is a new school that's built on an existing site without changes to grade configurations. So you'll see we listed some examples up there, most recently, obviously William O'Brien Middle School, my alma mater, E. Otis Vaughn Middle School, and then Echo Loader and Sparks Middle School, that would be in the future. When you're looking at these examples, the neighborhood and the community are not only familiar with the school sites, but they're familiar with the school name, their legacy, and also the functions of the school. And for that reason, the recommendation is not to activate the school naming committee. However, we do want to stress that considerations must include not only honoring the legacy of the current school, but honoring the legacies of any merging schools and the integration of the community. This is essential. Only together with families, staff, and our community can we establish a vibrant and supported and united school community that is built on an existing site with changes to grade configurations or with changes to its function. So Debbie Smith CTE Academy High School is our most recent one, soon-to-be Edward Pine Middle School Campus, and the Fred Trainer Middle School. Again, we, because there would be the changes to that grade configuration or changes to the function of the school, the recommendation would be for the school naming committee to be activated. I think the same stress that I just mentioned just a couple minutes ago is that we need to honor the legacy of the current school and any merging schools and then the integration of the community. For the Pine Campus, the recommendation would be activate the school naming committee this spring to prepare for the new school opening in the 2028, 29 school year. And having the spring would allow for the timeline for the zoning process to be completed so we can actively engage the zone neighborhoods and the community as a whole. For the Trainer Campus, we're still a little bit farther out, but as we all like to do, we need to look ahead to make sure that we're prepared when it comes to the planning.
I would just like to say thank you so much in your timeline consideration for knowing that zoned families comes first in the process and then making sure that those voices are involved, and I just want to put a point on that and say thank you so much.
Thank you. So for scenario three, I love the picture of those students right up there, is a new school built on a nearby site with or without changes to grade configuration. A current example was, just a couple years ago, was that we will all remember, Proctor R. Hug High School, and then now we have Sted Elementary School. We believe if there are changes to grade configurations, the recommendation would be to activate the school naming committee. As with Proctor R. Hug instead, that did not or do not have changes to grade configuration, so the recommendation would be not to activate the school naming. This is also consistent with past practice. Those who, like me, grew up here can remember the Old Brown Elementary School, which is now the Brown Center, or the Old Huffaker Elementary School, which is now the Huffaker Maintenance Yard. Though there are some of our oldest schools, even Sparks and Reno High Schools, many may not remember this, are not the original locations, yet they continue to bear the original name, and so that just kind of shows some past practice when it comes to that. So scenario four, these are the modernization to our existing school facilities. So think Bernice Matthews, Edward Reed High School, soon-to-be Virginia Palmer Elementary, Sparks High School. And I know our community is very excited about all the modernization that's going to be occurring at each of these schools. Looking at these examples, the neighborhood and the community are not only familiar with the school sites, but the names, the legacy, and the functions of the school. For this reason, the recommendation is to not activate the school naming committee. Again, though stressing that we have to honor the legacy of that current school, honor the legacies of any merging schools, and the integration of the communities. Again, vibrant, strong school community has to have a shared culture. And last, but certainly not least, is scenario five. This is when a school or facility needs to be repurposed due to a change or a closure. Examples include what will be our previous Sted Elementary, and in the future, Kate Smith, Edward Dodson, Smith Ridge Elementary Schools. For this scenario, due to the familiarity of the site and the association of the existing name, activation of the school naming committee is not recommended. However, I want to go back to slide number five, where we talk about the administrative reg 7111. It supports this process, and as I think Adam had mentioned, in accordance with the board policy 7110, naming of schools and other district facilities, only the Board of Trustees may approve the naming of a portion of a school facility to include athletic fields or any non-school facility. Many of you are familiar with this because you voted on a lot of these, and I just would like to kind of take note of the important votes you guys made, two or some of you made, to honor distinguished members of our community with this process. We have the Feimster Family Resource Center and the Rollins-Stalworth Stadium at Proctor R. Hug High School, the Richard Peraldo Gym at North Valleys High School, the Joe and Ann Gabika Family Soccer Field at Sparks High School, and last but certainly not least, love my alma mater, Joe Max Sellers Field at Worcester High School, and that's just to name a few. We also have past practice in the photo that's depicted up there with the Brown Center, which today houses staff from Capital Projects and Purchasing and was previous Brown Elementary School. As each repurposed building continues to serve the neighborhood and the community, keeping the original namesake honors the legacy of the individual and their contributions. In addition, the neighborhood is already familiar with the name, which provides continuity and makes it easier for families and community members to identify and connect with the site and its new purpose. As we're looking at future possibilities, an athletic field, a family resource center, a library at Vaughn Middle School may be named after, say, Edward Pine to honor his legacy and contributions. But again, that would be up to the board to make that final decision. And so the last slide would be for the Board of Trustees to direct the superintendent to activate the school naming committee in accordance with board policy 7110 for projects described in scenario two and scenario three.
Thank you. Thank you, President Smith. Thank you so much, both of you, for taking the time to really categorize this, because I know a few months ago, we, we kind of threw it out there and said, shouldn't naming be a part of some of these, but which ones? And it was, it was really, really broad and not clear on how this was going to happen. I do know that naming, as you said, can be a really emotional process for our community because the, especially when schools are named after a person, that person is very meaningful to the community. I know that the stories that we got to hear about Mr. Polakitis, when Polakitis opened, were incredible, and I can remember going K through six and seeing his picture in my elementary school. And then my kids got to see his picture in their elementary school, which was really cool, and that's, that's the beautiful thing about our area, is how much it matters. And you brought up several names of people that I personally know, and I know a lot of us knew in some way, shape, or form, whether they're family or not. So it is really important that we are pulling this process back and being really intentional about which situations include the naming committee and which situations are an opportunity for our board to honor the legacy of someone who's mattered in education. And I think the recent opening of Debbie Smith was a perfect example for so many of us because she, she made such a difference to our education system in Nevada, especially Northern Nevada. So I just want to thank you guys, you both, and everyone on your teams who worked on this, because I know we threw it out there a few months ago as kind of like this really big, broad idea, and everyone kind of got this like deer in the headlights look like, oh, that's a really big thing to just start activating. And so I just want to really, really say how appreciative I am for us categorizing it and making it very clear, because the community will also be able to know and what to expect coming forward. I know that we have a big meeting tomorrow night at the future site of a school on the Pine Campus, and I think that having this as, as... Pine Campus, and I think that having this as, as direction will really help with those conversations going forward, because there's been a lot of unknowns about what that's going to look like, because it's the first time we're doing it in generations. So I really appreciate this. I know you've all taken a long time to do this. I know the FMP has been a process, and this is just another puzzle piece to it, and it's really exciting. So thank you so much for this. So I will stop talking because I could go on. I'm very excited about this.
No, I appreciate that. We'll go to public comment here. So I, I love, I love what you've done. I think you've done a really, really good job, and I appreciate your attention to the timing of things, and that means a lot, and I know it means a lot to the people in our community. So I, I love the recommendation exactly the way that it is. Something I had talked about with Chief Anderson already before this was, I would also have an interest, want to bring to the members of the board, also providing clear direction from the board. When we do have a school that is slated for closure and consolidation, not through the school naming committee, but directing the superintendent, that options would be brought forward to this board from the superintendent so that those names could carry on. For example, Edward Pine Middle School, that's a school that's in its final year in its current process. An addendum to this motion would not involve the school naming committee, but would rather direct the superintendent to come forward with ideas for how Edward Pine can have a namesake experience within the district, because it's so important that a site that won't be continuing on in that original purpose is still a name with value and legacy and deep respect in this community. And I do believe a board action should be expanded to provide that clear intent from this board that those names will be carried forward. Now, we don't know what that's going to look like. We'll leave that to the superintendent to bring those ideas to us, but it does make a statement to the community that those names will never be lost, their legacy will never be lost, and they know that there will come at a future board meeting whenever the time is appropriate for the superintendent to share the staff's ideas for how those names can still stay alive in our buildings. So that's just something I wanted to extend as a thought to my colleagues to see what you all think about that. But it, it doesn't change this recommendation here, which I fully support.
Thank you, madam. So I have a question, because you stated, Chief Cersei, with regards to the emotions involved, et cetera. I remember when we were looking at, and I was a constituent, I wasn't on the board, I was a, a citizen in, in the community, and I got a lot of text messages and emails from individuals when there was a huge debate, almost fight over Debbie Smith naming of that school. I remember getting text messages and emails saying, we're going to rally, we're going to get together, we're going to go, you better be there, represent, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Well, my concern is if we do this, for example, the naming, I, I, my first question is, what is the duration of the committee? Like, is this committee going to exist in perpetuity, or is there going to be like a, there's going to be a three-month opening, or sixty days, or thirty days? Is this going to be an ongoing process all throughout the year? Because when, from what I remembered of those interactions and how emotional it was, that's a lot of, a lot of drama. There's a lot of drama for staff to have to work with and deal with, and, and these community members to, to, to work on. So I'd like to see, what does that look like? I'd like to have an idea.
Adam Cersei for the record, I appreciate you recognizing that. I want to, I want to be honest about that. As powerful as this is, it's also, you know, pretty intense. You know, by and large, this committee is going to work in service to the capital program, right? So when the project is established and becomes underway, becomes approved and funded and whatnot, that's when the committee's going to engage. You can see how, in the meantime, as the capital program has been in transition to the, from the building of new schools to the modernizing of existing schools, the committee's gone dormant, and those terms have expired. Now that, now pending today's outcome, we now have potentially a reason to reactivate the committee. We'll go through the recruitment and appointment process, and then it will function just as any other committee does with two-year terms and the opportunity for the committee members to renew. We would not seek to meet just to meet, you know, we wouldn't apply their agenda outside of the scope of these recommendations. And then, you know, again, it would, it would serve in rhythm or in support of the capital program, which is also driven by the Board of Trustees, if that, if that's helpful.
No, that, that, that gives me some, so we could have it all year round, really.
If the projects, and I think on scenario two and three, the projects that warrant, that are being recommended for naming committee engagement are actually somewhat limited. They're not that frequent and not that numerous. So it's, it won't quite be like the, you know, 2017 to 2020 era where we pumped out nine new schools in that period of time. But that said, they shouldn't be taken lightly. Like, people are very passionate about this topic.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Smith. Chief Cersei, or maybe even Chief Anderson, wouldn't it be kind of like when the share committee was geared up to get the new share formatted? I know there was like announcements going out when the committee was meeting, and then you just went to talk about share. So wouldn't it be like, oh, there's going to be a naming committee on Tuesday, the whatever, to talk about the renaming of Pine Middle School or something? So wouldn't it be kind of scheduled dates where people could go and fill a card out and talk? So it wouldn't be like, you know, storming the gates all year long, I don't think. I mean...
No, there's, the committee's subject to open meeting loss posted, just like we would with any other committee that...
That's when people would go and be able to have their say.
Correct.
And it could go on for hours, but at least they would give their say.
Don't you jinx us.
Well, I think that, oh, I'm sorry, I think that's the brilliance of what this recommendation is, is because like, for example, Sted Elementary School is moving to a new site, but there's no consolidation of other schools. It's, it's well-known to the community that is not recommended for school naming. So it's not like this is a free-for-all. It's more of like a laser.
Yeah, that, that was what I was just going to say. So in looking at these scenarios, there's, in, in the projects that we currently are looking at in the next two to three years, there's potentially two that would, that could be up for naming. Everything else is not recommended, and really, the, this, to me, what I'm seeing is that we're, what we're really recommending is that we ensure that the, the legacy of schools that might be closing somehow still have a naming purpose in our community, but we would leave that to the discretion of the superintendent bringing ideas, his, his team bringing ideas to us, and then we would have purview over that rather than instituting, starting the naming committee. So in my mind, in the next, the term that the, the, the naming committee would currently have, if everyone started, you know, this school year, would be two projects potentially, just based on slide, sorry, the background one that has the FMP with the circles, just looking at that, nearly all of them fall under one of the other scenarios. And so we're really looking at two projects. So we're not opening ourselves up to, you know, meetings every single month and having reports and, and all of that, because I think that's the potential concern, that it is that we're opening ourselves up to everyone wanting something to be named after their grandfather, and I, I mean, we all had really important grandparents in our lives, but we don't have that many schools we're building. So that's, that's my thought, is that we're, we're really, really narrowing what this would be for, and that's why I really like these different scenarios, because we're being very, very specific about what it would be for. I also really like that we're also kind of pulling the timeline together, which I know is part of another agenda item, but this, this pulls that, that community integration together. So that's the other piece that I was personally asking for. And I, and it's giving the community very clear guidelines, like it will happen here, but it won't happen here, that kind of thing.
JJ, do we have any public comment?
I have no cards for this item.
All right, I'll just, I'll bring it back here. So just to add on to that, the reason why I believe that a second part should be on the recommendation is because really there is no action without board action, and I think for facilities and the school communities to know that the board has taken action to direct the superintendent, to find ways to carry those names forward definitively answers that question. I've gotten it. I've, Pine is one of my middle schools right now. I have been asked, how are we going to honor Pine? The answer is, I don't know. We're going to leave that to the superintendent to bring us those ideas, but it is our responsibility as a board to make it clear that those will come forward to us, so that facilities and all these community meetings can definitively say, yes, the board has taken action, and we'll bring those ideas forward. The superintendent's working on that, so they know that those names will live on like the legacy of the people before. So that's my two cents on that. Trust you, Wes Lake?
A, a question, Madam President. So would it need to be an additional scenario, or would it be like added on to scenario two?
Neither, I think.
The addendum.
I think neither. It would just be like something that I had drafted before was, of course, the recommendation, the way that it is now, so exactly as it is now, as described in scenario two and scenario three, and directs the superintendent to bring forward options to the board that carry forward the legacy of namesake schools slated for closure or consolidation. So it would be that recommendation plus that direction of the superintendent in those other situations, but I don't think it changes any of the scenarios. I don't think Chief Anderson thought it changed any of the scenarios either.
No, I think it's just in alignment with the, the board, existing board policy and administrative reg. It just puts that historical perspective on the record.
I was just going to say, so moved. But I can read it because I have it in front of me, but I think Neil has a question.
I do. Is, is it your intent that it's staff to, to meet this, or is it your intent that the naming committee meets this historic?
No, just directing the superintendent, so not the school naming committee. Because I would, I would say that that would be under the purview of the superintendent based on the ideas of staff, kind of coming forward the way that it is now, like the family centers, fields. I would not want the school naming committee to be in charge of determining that. I assume that was a good idea, so, okay. But no, just to make that clear, not the school naming committee. This would be the purview of staff and the superintendent.
Thank you for that clarification and that question, General Counsel. I might be misunderstanding the intent of what you want to add. To me, it, it, I have a sense that it adds something on to a motion that doesn't need to be there. I see it as separate in what we're trying to accomplish here. I think it muddies it. So help me understand.
Well, sure. So as it stands right now, we don't actually guarantee that we'll carry anybody's names forward. We don't. When a school closes, we have no action that says we'll carry the name forward. I have gotten questions that people have said, well, what happens to Edward Pine's name? And so by adding this on, not for the school naming committee, but rather directing the superintendent, it sets the intention of this board that those legacy names will carry forward in other schools, a portion of it, not the whole school itself. So this might be a family center, it may be a field, it may be something. I don't know what that is. It sets the intentionality from the Board of Trustees that those names will not be lost, and the superintendent will bring forward ideas for where they could fit on other campuses. Otherwise, it's just, it might happen, it might not happen. The board hasn't taken a direction on it, and the superintendent doesn't have to necessarily do that, because we don't have a, a guarantee or an intention for that now.
Yes, thank you. That really did help. And I, my sense is, is the same, is that this really is directing the superintendent to activate the school naming committee, and I would like to keep it as that. I believe that what you're trying to do is separate from that, and we shouldn't put them together. I, I don't think what you're trying to accomplish, honorable, and I get it, doesn't belong with this very simple activating the school naming committee.
Well, I, I do think it, it, it works in this simply because the other scenarios talk about not, like the other examples of, you know, so for example, the Brown Center was a school, and we kept it that name. So I think the other examples are in here for when it isn't appropriate to use the school naming committee. So because the other scenarios include other situations that the board in the past has done, and it does follow board policy and administrative regulation that the board has the purview over that area, so rename, so a building that isn't used as a school and the ability to name like a field or a part of a school, that's very clearly in admin reg and the board policy. So I think it's, so maybe it's that the, I don't know, maybe it's just that it's described in the other scenarios, that that's where the board has a say in it, something like that, which I think what you read does that.
Yeah, I mean, we don't necessarily have to do that, but then we're just going to have to agendize a whole second conversation on whether or not we want to carry forward the legacy of the names. If we can add it into one recommendation, if the chief legal counsel is okay with that, then I'd rather just do it now, but we could agendize it for a whole second agenda item and take a vote on it. But it's the same thing, is that there is no mechanism where our board has ever directed and assured the communities that the names will carry forward. So we could certainly do it in another agenda item, but we're just going to spend the time to do that. If legal counsel feels we can add it into the same recommendation, then we, we save ourselves a whole second agenda item, but I'm very open.
Yeah, so I think, I think what I was trying to get at, and it was taking me a minute to get there, so in, what you said is and directs the superintendent, and I think that's where we could say in scenarios one, four, and five, to bring name ideas to the board. Is that what you were trying to say?
No, because we don't know in these scenarios when another school is going to be closed or consolidated.
Oh, okay.
So like, for example, with Bernice Matthews, that school would not be renamed. I agree, it should not be renamed. But we do know that we've been having conversations around other schools. So I don't think that it, it's just a blanket.
Okay, so that's not the right way to say it.
It's just a blanket, yeah.
Okay.
I think fundamentally, it's taken me a while to get to really explain this, so thank you for the conversation. I would like the school naming committee to have this conversation and make recommendations. I, I, I really believe that I would like to have the school naming committee have the opportunity and the responsibility to really vet this and/or put it on an agenda so we can really talk about it, because I, I think this is more complex than I am ready to, to approve today. That's, it's very important, and I'm not ready to approve that today.
Thank you, President Smith. Thanks to all, of course, thanks to Chief Cersei and Chief Anderson for a great presentation, walking us through what we understand will bring a lot to our community. And I understand the intentions that have been described through, throughout the dais here. The recommendation as is seems to stand to reason, and I can understand the merits of a naming committee and of a superintendent and staff looking to repurpose. As I believe I understand it, historically, it has been more staff, when we look at the examples that have been provided, that have been the ones around the repurposing name, when we look at the North Valleys Gymnasium and some of the other ones that were mentioned. And so it, it may, you know, again, as I, as I'm listening to the whole of the conversation, I, I think, you know, the, the benefits may, by staying with that historical precedent, I think there can be a lot of... think there can be a lot of value in that. So, again, I, I understand, you know, the different sides to this. Of course, we will follow the direction of our board, but from, from one perspective, I think historically, following that and keeping the naming around scenarios two and three can make a lot of sense.
So, just to make sure I understand, you would rather have the staff direct on carrying forward legacy names, like for fields, family centers, and not necessarily have that a function of the school naming committee, which is the way that it's been done. That's the standing practice.
Yes, yes, to clarify. I, I wanted to make sure that we're staying within the agenda item as we're working this through. I know how important that is to all of us and so I appreciate any analysis in that area, but yes, to clarify, staff on the, the legacy name being repurposed in, in other ways out.
I guess I have a few questions. So, you were mentioning that President Smith suggested that the naming of portions traditionally or comes from the superintendent and I can't remember, I know we had one example of athletic director who was, was sick, right? And this, we, we, we agreed to waive, but as part of that vote, we waived the rules, as I recall it. We had the board vote to waive Administrative Regulation 7111. So, our regulation says that the naming of schools and other district facilities rests with the Board of Trustees in accordance with Board Policy 7110. Board Policy 7110 is the board policy where the committee is created. So, in reading those in conjunction with each other, it seems like it should go through that process. Those are the only facilities that I can remember that were named without going through that process. I don't know if Adam can remember more. I just remember the one. You did waive it, but you voted to waive it and that's the point. So, traditionally, technically, you're supposed to go through this process. So, we're changing a policy and a reg. I would just, I would be, can you give me your sentence again there at the end? I'm just trying to.
Sure. And to clarify, and we can bring this back as a whole other item. We have no direction that says we will carry forward the legacy of the names when we close a school. We don't, okay? We just don't, folks. So, the only people who can do that are the seven of us here. And if we don't vote to do that, it doesn't have to happen. The only way, for example, I can answer the questions in my community when someone says, how are you going to do that? As it stands right now, there's no rule that says that. And so, what I'm looking to actually accomplish, since we're talking about schools and other district facilities, is to say clearly that the superintendent has the direction from the board to carry forward namesake legacies in some fashion and to bring that back to us. It's not school naming. We don't have that rule anywhere. He only does that at the direction of the board. We can't expect him to do that. So, we don't have that anywhere because we really haven't closed too many schools, not in recent times. So, we have to, as a board, direct the superintendent if we want that to happen or not. So, I 100% believe we should carry forward the legacy names without an actual motion or direction. It simply doesn't exist because we don't do anything without a majority vote. So, we can absolutely bring it back for a whole nother discussion, but I will tell you right now, I've got Edward Pine Middle School closing in my district and I want to make sure that Edward Pine is represented somewhere as we would also see in other schools as they close. I mean, we've got Corbett, we've got a lot of legacies here and the, the board has never taken a direction on what do we do. So, this offers the scenario that we are directing the superintendent at a time of his choosing and his recommendations to bring it forward to us so we can tell people in the community, Edward Pine will be honored in a future school or at another school and, you know, that'll be coming forward. We've just, no board has ever taken direction on that. So, we have to do that. And to answer your question, I'm sorry for going on, the line was, and directs the superintendent to bring forward options to the board that carry forward the legacy of namesake schools slated for closure or consolidation. But I genuinely don't mind bringing this back as a whole other item. We can do that too, but it doesn't happen unless our board takes a majority vote. So, hopefully that helps. Both ways work equally well for me.
So, as an example, if I can piggyback on that for clarity, Edward Pine Middle School closes and now it's the Adam Mayberry Elementary School.
100%, absolutely.
And there's a gym or the cafeteria could be called, you know, the Edward Pine Cafeteria. I mean, that's, that's what your, that's what your vision is.
100% because we do not, nor has there been any board action that I know of that ensures that these legacies will move forward from the closed schools, but it's not the school naming committee and it's not even directly from us. We'll vote on it, but we're giving the superintendent and his team the direction to think about where that could land in their best judgment. Yeah.
President Smith, if I could have Chief Circe also maybe offer some additional information for this conversation, I think that too might be helpful.
Just one point of illustration perhaps. There's nothing to preclude the naming committee in this community from recommending that the new elementary school on the current Pine campus be named the Pine Elementary School. So, totally understand and respect the point you're making to affirmatively and proactively vote to direct that that name be carried forward in some form or fashion. Just as a, to offer as a consideration, you know, as we work through this as a community and as an organization, another option would be to just take this first step first, see where the chips fall with respect to Pine. Now, that leaves the open-ended question, perhaps that we can't answer cert, with certainty, but it will allow for an action item in the future related to the naming of that elementary school that could then be amended as we're attempting to do today. Either way, I just wanted to make that subtle distinction.
Yeah, just, and President Smith, if I can just wing in here too, just on scenario two, I mean, Mr. Circe, that's sort of the, that's the trepidation I have is, I mean, I understand Edward Middle School will no longer be a middle school, but it's still on the same property. Why wouldn't it be Pine Elementary School? I mean, going back to trustee Woodley's comments, I mean, this is a very emotional, the, the naming process can be very emotional, can be very hurtful for, for the heritage, for the family name. You know, we saw this in 1994 when Reno Cannon International Airport became the Reno Tahoe Airport. I mean, the Cannon family was, was really upset over that, right? And so, what do they do? They, they, they named, pardon me, just to give my, finish my thought. So, they renamed the, the terminal, the Howard Cannon Terminal, but nobody refers to it as the Howard Cannon Terminal. They refer to it as Reno Tahoe Airport. So, you know, I, I have some pause too over a, a lot of this. I'm not quite confident I'm ready to get behind it either, but go ahead now, I'm sorry.
So, I think with the Pine Campus is what I'll refer to it as, you're changing the configuration of a grade. So, that's where the naming committee and the community would really voice their opinion. It could become the Pine Elementary School. It could also become Dodson Elementary School. It could become Smith Ridge because you are dealing with other merging schools and that's where the community would really voice their opinion. And then that recommendation would come before the board for you to make the ultimate decision as to.
So, this elective body would ultimately have the final say?
Correct.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, and I was just going to say, Chief Anderson just brought up that, that there's other schools in this conversation. When we're consolidating, that, that's the reason that I originally brought this up is that it seems like initially, we, we were discussing it as the Pine, that it was going to be Pine, but that, that's quite an assumption considering that we're consolidating multiple schools onto a new campus. So, we've got a culture and a community at Smith Ridge Elementary. We've got a culture and a community at Pine and we have a culture and community at Dodson, which, again, zoning has not decided, so we're, we're saying that those are, those are kind of the recommendations initially in the FMP. And so, the community should have an opportunity to have a conversation about the school, but then two out of the three of those schools are named after people. So, we, so my, my thought process on this is that we still need to make sure that somehow, if one of those names is not chosen to be continued, how will we also recognize that person who clearly impacted our community in some way? And so, it sounds like we, we do somewhat already have a process for that and it sounds like we're, we're not quite in a place to create the process for bringing it to the board, that, that legacy piece, but we just want to make sure we don't forget it, I think. So, it sounds like to me, like, that we're kind of, we're, we're okay with this part, but we just don't have clarity around how we're going to handle the, the additional names yet. That's kind of what I'm hearing, but maybe we have more info.
If, if I may, President Smith, superintendent brought up a really good point that there's a precedent, which is basically kind of like law because it's just what's been done and that's how we do it. But then, when I'm looking at the recommendation on scenario two, which really what we're talking about applies to this scenario, it almost is saying, it, well, it does say, the school naming committee should be engaged. Considerations must include honoring legacy of current school, honoring legacy of merging schools, and the integration of communities. So, it's almost like precedent of the superintendent and the team having the oversight, we're almost now, I mean, it's, it's like, which one is it? Is it superintendent and the team or is it the direction of the recommendation? So, it, that, there's definitely a conflict there.
I'm not sure I understand that one.
Well, superintendent said there's precedent.
Yes, yes.
Already, but then the direction here is telling the school naming committee to consider and include honoring legacy of current school and the other schools. So, it's almost like we're directing them to run with it, but in the past, superintendent has done it.
No, so that's like with the naming of the schools. So, the superintendent's office has brought forward, for example, the Feimster Family Resource Center at HUG, okay? And the superintendent's office and the staff typically make decisions about portions within a school or on a school campus, not school naming. The school naming committee only does the naming of the building. So, I don't actually think that there's a conflict with that, but I will point out, and this is perhaps a difficult reality, folks, we are not building the same number of schools that we're considering for consolidation. We've got Dodson, we've got Pine, we have Corbett, we have a whole list of schools in this FMP whose legacies are slated to not move forward for a school and we have no board clarity about whether or not we're going to carry those legacies forward. Vice President Mayberry is 100% right. The school naming committees could choose one of those names. It is still guaranteed that there are fewer schools being built than there are legacies. I have no problem with re-agendizing this for the next meeting, but I do absolutely believe that, or some future meeting, we have to also tell the community that we are going to be protecting these legacies and the only way we do that is by a board vote, folks. Like, that's, we know this, we know this. The only way we tell the community that Dodson, Corbett, Pine, the list goes on and on, will be carried forward is by taking a majority board action, but we can certainly agendize that another time and literally just have this conversation over again and see where we land. 100% okay, both paths are equally as good. Heads up, I'm bringing it because I believe it is important for this board. It may not be. We, the board may direct the superintendent not to honor the legacies. Nonetheless, we should take a vote on that and the community should knows where we land on it because as we talk about closing schools and consolidating schools, an immediate second important question is, what happens to the legacy of that person? I would like us to take an action that clarifies that for the superintendent and to the community, which is only done through majority board vote. I will pause now. Trustee Nicolette.
Thank you, President Smith. Absolutely concur and that's why I like the idea of agendizing it in a future meeting. We have had very rich conversation. Because of, of what we have here in our agenda today, that would not have alerted the public to us having this conversation, which is an extremely important conversation. That's why I'd like to agendize it properly so we can hear other voices than ours.
Well, I mean, I didn't really expect this conversation on this. You know, look, if we have a member raising an open bean law issue, I'm always going to be conservative and say, well, maybe we should suspend this and reconsider down the road. And maybe I should have thought of this earlier, so I accept responsibility for that, but I'm, as I'm, as we're going through this, maybe the board just needs to fix Board Policy Because if you look at this, there's a lot of inconsistencies with the policy and what's being said in this discussion. And for example, the naming committee is supposed to decide the name of facilities and places, but yet we're up here talking about, no, the superintendent brings that to you. That's not really, if that's happened in the past, I'm not going to speak to that. I have attorney-client privilege, but I'm just going to say that we want to do it right. So, if we want to do it right, maybe this is the way to do it and we take these scenarios, we put them in here and we bring it all back to you and fix it that way. I, you know, I don't know. That's my recommendation. I do know, that's my recommendation. Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, no, I think that that's a good one. So, when I ask the question, so just so the community knows, the, when the board receives the materials on Thursday, we submit questions, staff gets us those questions back. One of the questions that I had asked was exactly on this and the answer I got back was that, among other things, the board could take action to direct that the names of schools slated for closure or repurposing be integrated into another school. That's why I brought this up because I asked the question and I thought that's exactly what we were doing here. But I am completely fine with that and we'll just agendize that conversation for another time and, and see where that takes us, either through board policy or direction or whatnot. That works for me.
Well, so, sorry, just to clarify, Neil, so if, if you're, you're saying that we might need to adjust 7110, but this recommendation is still okay because it's in accordance with it, right? So, we're, we're good. Okay, just not, I don't want to break any rules here. Okay, well, I'm, I can make the motion if we're ready. Okay. I move that the Board of Trustees directs the superintendent to activate the school naming committee in accordance with Board Policy 7110 for the projects described in scenario two and scenario three.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Hall. We have a second by trustee Nicolette. Seeing no lights on for discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right.
Nay.
Thank you for that. Motion carries five to two. Thank you so much, colleagues. All right, we're going to go ahead and just take a very brief break here. Thank you so much to both of our chiefs and we'll be back in just about five minutes.
Okay, folks, I'm Adam Mayberry. I'm the Vice President of School Board. President Smith has had prior commitments, so I'll be presiding the rest of the meeting. We're going to call this meeting back to order at, let's see, 3:46. We're going to call for item 3.03. This is an item from approval of guaranteed maximum price from Core West Doing Businesses, Core Construction for the Bernice Matthews Elementary School. And our presenters will be Tammy Zimmerman, the Chief Facilities Management Officer, and Andrea Sullivan, Senior Director of Supply Chain Management. Although that does not look like Andrea.
April Anderson, Assistant Director of Procurement and Contracts for the Record.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Vice President Mayberry. Thank you, trustees, for having us. We're here to bring forward the recommendation for the award of the guaranteed maximum price for the modernization for Bernice Matthews Elementary School. This is the first elementary school modernization out of the gate, out of the modernization plan, and so we're super excited about that. We've been here a couple times, talked about some of the scope with seven classroom additions, a steam lab upgrade, taking the computer library in and making that a steam lab, modifications to the library, some of the general improvements with flooring and the hallway, paint, those kind of things, and making it a community space, too. Bringing community and schools into the front of the building so that they can be of service to that community, bringing in office spaces for our specialists like psychologists, school counselors, social workers as needed, and then hub spaces in that as well. I do want to let you know that we were able to award all of the alternates that are substantial for the school. We did not award one, which was more of a schedule change, which is not something we were willing to do, but we were able to do carpet and paint in the classrooms. We're able to do the front entryway with the new single point of entry in there, so it'll be very visible and very safe for them. And we were able to do that within the original estimate of construction funding that we asked for. So we were able to couple those all in under the $16 million ask in the construction bucket. So that's super exciting. We're super happy to have Core Construction help us with that and make sure that we can make those promises happen for the school and the staff over there. Want to talk about, you know, you guys have approved the design phase funding. You've also approved our architect to do the work, which is Van Wert Begoti, and they're here today in the audience, as well as Core Construction. And we're just really excited to kick this project off. And with that, I will turn it over to April Anderson.
Thanks so much, Tammy. To dovetail off of what Tammy just spoke on, I do want to provide one piece of clarification to the staff report that we submitted. We need to specify the funding source. The funding source that was stated in the staff report should read Fund 16 2025 A WC1 General Obligation Funds. So I just wanted to make sure I have that on the record. I'm now going to highlight the solicitation process that Core Construction used to arrive at the final guaranteed maximum price, or GMP as we often refer to it, that we're bringing to you for approval. They issued bids to pre-qualified subcontractors on June 11th. They also held a mandatory pre-bid walk at Matthews for interested parties to tour the site and marriette plans and kind of see what we were envisioning. And then after nearly a month of evaluation by all these interested bidders, Core accepted sealed bids on July 9th. As required by NRS 338, district representatives were in attendance for the bid opening. And then I just, these are some of the things that I really get excited about. This project really generated a lot of interest from our subcontractor community. We had nearly 100 sub bids. We had multiple bids across most scopes. So it was really exciting to see all that hard work come to fruition from our design team and our contractor, our CMAR. They, Core then did a very thorough review and interview process of all submitted proposals. And after that was complete, the purchasing department and the capital projects departments collaboratively evaluated Core's final GMP. And after multiple discussions and clarifications, we agreed to a final GMP price of $14,45,136. That includes, as Tammy mentioned, the base bid scope of work and four of the alternates, which were the work portions that were proposed. And then as part of this contract and project, this is also something I get excited to highlight as well, 84% of the subcontractors are local northern Nevada companies. And so then in conclusion, we just want to bring this recommendation to the board to ask for you to approve the contract to Core Construction for a guaranteed maximum price of $14,45,136. We would like to include an owner's contingency of $1,245,000, which brings the grand total to $15,290,000. And 100, or I'm sorry, $290,136.
With that, we'll start, if you guys approve this today, we'll start construction in September, and we anticipate completing construction in the fall of 2026.
Trustee Hull.
Oh, this is so exciting. I just have one quick question. So September of this year, which is very exciting, how is the classes that are currently being used, those are the ones that you were able to include in the, as the optional, right?
So the existing classrooms inside are the ones that are getting the additional love to them with carpet and paint. So the staff will come back to classrooms that are a little refreshed in the entire school.
Okay, and that will happen, obviously, over a break, I assume. Will it happen summer, or is there a timeline?
We anticipate any of that interior work happening in the summertime so that teachers are able to take their stuff down, and we'll work with Core and that with a schedule to make sure that we're not as disruptive to those staff.
Okay, great. I really, I really appreciate how many people applied because I think that that really tells us that you guys have done a great job of communicating how that this is a community effort. We started that with WC1 back in the day, all of us that were involved in it in various, you know, efforts. I think that the tagline was promises made, promises kept, and that's what we're doing. So I just really want to applaud the communications work that's being done by everyone in the district because there's a lot of buzz around all of these schools getting their renovations and the updates, and that's so exciting that we're finally getting to that point and really investing in the core of our community. So I wanted to applaud you for that. And I also know, side note, that you're really making a huge effort to include the communities that may be zoned into it. So I know there's been several announcements going out about that. So again, really, really kudos to ensuring that there's communication so that everybody can be a part of this because it's, it's just so exciting. So, thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Trustee Hull, Trustee Westlake.
Thank you. I was looking at the description, and there's base price, so it's the, let's see, what page number this is, if that helps. Anyhow, Bernice Matthews is one of my schools, so I'm really excited. It's, it's a beautiful school, but it's, it could use some TLC, so I'm super excited for them. I'm looking at, I just had it, the landscaping, irrigation, and site furnishings. I can't even remember what board meeting it was. I'm thinking it might have even been three back. Maybe you can help me, Ms. Tammy, where we were talking about shade and playground equipment. I don't see a line item specifically for shade structures or, you know, jungle gyms kind of thing. Is that included in that?
So the shade structure is integral part to the existing structure, so we're building out onto that and providing a structure off of that, which is adjacent to the hub space that they have shade with that. So it allows them to pull out from that hub space in the back of the building into that shade structure, use it as a connectivity. And then they already have a lot of playground structure, but we're working with the city of Reno. They've actually approved the boundary line adjustment, so we're going to increase their playground a little bit, take off that bathroom in the back. So that's, there may be some benches, and there will be landscape requirements in there as well. So that's part of that, that bid.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Do we have any public comment?
Travis Coombs.
Mr. Coombs, great to see you.
Did I do that right? Okay. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Travis Coombs, I'm Vice President with Core Construction. I don't have any prepared remarks, so you'll have to bear with me, but I wanted to start off and just express how grateful we are to be here with another opportunity to partner with Washoe County School District. We've been very blessed in the past to have partnered on a couple of several different projects, and this is something that we're very passionate about, is building for education. One of the things that I also wanted to acknowledge and express our willingness to participate in is the district's passion for engaging in the communities that you are working in. Oftentimes, in these communities, the school is a focal point for kids and adults and community to rally around. We have an individual who works with us, and he is going to be a dedicated student engagement coordinator. It's a unique opportunity, working on an active school campus, to reach out to the students and engage them as a part of the architecture and engineering and construction process. And we're going to, we're going to take that very seriously and look to really engage with those students. But also, in addition to that, we want to engage with the community, the nonprofits, the organizations in the community. There's a saying that a rising tide raises all boats. We want to try to network with both the district and the community to develop partnerships and really, how can we maximize the value that Bernice Matthews brings to this community? So that's what we're going to do, and we really appreciate it. Again, thank you for the opportunity, and I'm very happy to be here.
Thank you, sir. We, we appreciate you. And, you know, we talked a lot about naming earlier, and Bernice Matthews is a, is a pretty powerful name in our community. She's been a, is a wonderful public servant, so this is a great testament and honor to her and her legacy as well. All right, we've already had public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Nicole Willis Grimes.
Hi, good afternoon. Nicole Willis Grimes, I am the Executive Director of Communities and Schools of Western Nevada, and we are super excited about this development. Bernice Matthews, we've been a partner with them for about three years now, since 2022. We do have an onsite site coordinator who works collaboratively with the students, families, the faculty. We are engaged in the community. We work very closely with the neighboring nonprofits, including Boys and Girls Club, Food Bank of Northern Nevada. I'm really excited to hear about the student engagement efforts that Core Construction is also committed to. This is really exciting, especially when it comes to elementary students who are just now starting to ask that question and explore that question of what do I want to be when I grow up? So this is a fantastic opportunity. I'm just here really just to share with you our support of this. This is really exciting to see this new construction, the rehabilitation and modernization of these facilities, especially for Title I schools, that our students truly do deserve in those communities. So grateful for your support for this, and also just told in my commitment in continuing to work with you, appreciate your all's support, but also continue to work with you, not just on this, but in current and future modernization and new construction efforts, understanding that these are sensitive, changes are sensitive to these communities. We're an extra set of eyes and ears on the ground, working hand in hand with our school community, as well as the students and families, and helping provide additional support, whether it's additional information that we can transfer from the district to our families and students to give them more comfort and understanding of what's going on, and making sure they understand that the support that they currently have, they'll continue to have. But also working with the schools that might be consolidating into the existing schools, knowing that there can be a soft handoff for those students as well, and they can see a friendly face in addition to the regular school administration on campus. So happy to answer any questions, and again, thank you so much for all your support, too.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Grimes.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Woodley.
Vice President, I'm ready to make a motion.
Please do, thank you.
I move that the Board of Trustees approves the guaranteed maximum price for Core West Incorporated Doing Businesses as Core Construction as the construction manager at risk for the Bernice Matthews Elementary School Modernization Project, CMAR number 25-10-C-08-8A, in the amount of $14,45,136. Approval of an owner's contingency in the amount of $1,245,000, for a total of $15,290,136. An approval of Washoe County School District's owner CMAR construction agreement.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Trustee Woodley to approve item 3.03, and a second by Trustee Hull. Any further comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you very much. It's been a wonderful journey to get here. Look forward to it. Okay, 3.04 is the presentation and discussion on another school modernization project for the North Valleys High School Modernization Project. And funding for information technology device refresh program. That's recommended by the Capital Funding Protection Committee, and again, we'll have presenters, Tammy Zimmerman is with us, Facilities Management Officer.
Thank you, Vice President Mayberry, trustees. Here, you didn't think the party would stop. We're going to start another party here, right? We have a recommendation from Capital Funding Protection Committee that we took to them early in August, and it's here for the 2025-2026 A Major Projects Programs. And there's a couple, there's three different pieces to this, so I'm going to do it in those pieces, and as we go through that, you can ask questions for that. But the first one is we're asking for some funding, design funding or pre-design funding for Sparks High School Modernization Project. This was depicted in the 2023 approved facility modernization plan. It is a modernization for historic building at Sparks High School, right? And it has a lot of alumni love, and it should. And we want to use that funding to start investigating those items and engage that alumni over there, go out to the community for requests for qualifications for an architect. We think it deserves that kind of attention. We'd like to start with that community involvement with that, to see what's possible out there. It is a little landlocked. What can we do? What should we be doing? How can we move forward and honor Sparks High School and the alumni, and also provide for the future students that'll go here? So that's why it is not as large as some of our designs that we're asking for. We're pre-designing this and doing some concepts with an architect that we would like to hire and using those funds to do that and gain that insight from the alumni and the community over there. So it is, it is in a special part of town, and I anticipate having a lot of engagement with that. These are the pre-designed scopes that we would be talking about, which we do with all of ours, traffic study, utilities, city compliance, and we'll be working through that with an architect that we would like to obviously hire through this. August 2025, we would be putting out an RFQ here soon for an architect. Start pre-design once we get them onboard in January, probably spend the spring with them, and then come out of the gate in June of 2026 and ask for full design phase funding, and then hire a construction manager at risk because it will be an active campus. That's kind of how we see it playing out with this. It's going to be a really special project, but it's going to be a difficult project, and we need to put all these players in place to do that, and that's what we're asking for today. The next one, we're going to, we're going to play on with the modernization at North Valleys High School. This project was heavily discussed in the facility modernization community outreach. It was discussed with the community out there about high school, do we need a smaller high school out in Cold Springs? They ultimately, as you can see in that bar that's 3.7, that they would like an addition onto the existing high school instead of a smaller high school out in Cold Springs. They were concerned about the opportunities that it would not provide those students, and so we heard them loud and clear. And so we don't know exactly what that's going to look like, but that was their ask, and so we'd like to move forward with that. It's, we kind of started laying out some blocks and pieces in the modernization, looking at putting that single point of entry up front. We're currently just putting a camera up there and locking down that vestibule. This would be a bigger single point of entry for that. The secure perimeter that was approved will add to this. It won't, it, it will supplement this. It won't be thought about again because the way we are installing that, it'll work with any of these modernizations that we choose to do. We're going to be bringing that front office up front possibly. We'll look at that with the architect, right? So that you can find it, you're not going down the hallway to find it. And then we'll be able to put some of the library back and maybe the heart of the school using that courtyard. That was kind of the thinking at the time. We'll work through an architect, we'll work with the principal, the area soup. Student voice is going to be a big part of these discussions because they use it every day. So we're, we'll get to that, but these are kind of our initial ideas and concepts in the facility modernization plan. So you'll see here another kind of array of vendors and consultants that'll help us and things that we'll look through with that design phase funding. We're asking for $16.5 million today. It was approved in the CIP in that format already, so we're following the plan that we set forth financially. So we'll start in January of 2026, looking to hire a CMAR. We have an architect that we're working with on proposals for that already, and then we'll work through the design phase from January to October 2026. And then we'll come back in October of 2026 and talk to you guys about funding for that, do permit submissions. Construction bidding with our CMAR would happen in the winter timeframe so that we could set it up for a construction start at a high school in the summer, you know, starting in April of 2027. And we like to start those in the summer because that's when we can get in and make some changes and get everybody acclimated and do some exiting in that before they come back because it's going to be an active campus as well. Our next one, if you guys don't have any questions about this, is our funding request for information technology device refresh. And I'm phoning a friend with Mr., with Dr. Turner here because while we put this into our program and we program it, he has all the nuts and bolts of it. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Turner.
Good afternoon, Dr. Turner.
Thank you, Vice President Mayberry. I'm here to discuss our annual device refresh, which is entering its fifth year. We originated the program in 2020, the school year 2021-22, as an outcome of our strategic technology plan. This year, we're requesting $5.2 million. That helps us answer to the rise in costs of student and teacher technology as a result of the tariff price cost adjustments. And so part of the program, as you can see there, it loosely says we're replacing 20% of student and teacher devices across the district. What that really means is we try and, we, our goal is to always reach 700 teacher computers every year and 10,000 student computers. And then in addition to that, tonight, as part of the consent agenda, as you know, we, we initiated the purchase program for 2,400 iPads, and those will be rolled out as soon as they arrive in the district to service our kindergarten through second graders in our elementary schools.
So with that, we have our handy-dandy little Excel spreadsheet that adds up all of what we're asking for today for approval. So we're asking the Board of Trustees to approve the 2025-2026 A Major Project Program in the amount of $22.7 million.
Great, thank you very much, colleagues. Questions? I, I do have a couple of questions. I want to start off with, first, Sparks High School. Want to clarify for the record that Sparks High School is not being torn down.
Sparks High School is not being torn down. The scope is a modernization to provide it the spaces and the needs that it has to meet our other new high schools that we have, like Proctor-Hug.
Right, right, so we're starting that process.
Correct.
Good, yeah. So remember this, there's somebody, I won't say their name, but they're a member of the Sparks City Council that are constantly on, Trustee Westlake and I, yeah, when it comes to Sparks High School. So I'm delighted that we're moving forward and looking at ways to, ways to improve that, that facility is a special iconic building for, for the community, as you know. So thank you for that, thank you for that clarification. Secondly, Dr. Turner, want to ask you about hardware, you know, particularly computers in schools, and when, when our team replaces computers in the classrooms and libraries, we take them away for, because they're old, they're outdated, they present a security risk. What, what's the, the policy on replacing them? In other words, some of the feedback we've received is that we take out hardware in the classrooms and we don't replace it. Can you address that?
Yeah, I'd like to take this opportunity to provide some clarification around that. So our, our purchase program obviously is renewed in a governed way by this body here. So we get approval for the program and the funding on an annual basis, beginning in late May or June with the Capital Funding Protection Committee, and then it progresses to the board level where we receive final approval for the purchase of devices. And typically, after those approvals, then we have to, then we examine the environment and we look at how many teachers we have and how many students we have. And we don't look at 60,000 or 62,000 students. We drill all the way down to how many students per school, and then we refresh the technology at each school based on that school's enrollment. So we, we target a 20%, like I indicated, a 20% renewal rate because it's a five-year rolling plan. This is our fifth year. It doesn't conclude this year, we're going to just start back over again. But we, we try and renew with the budget that we're provided at 20% per year. And those purchasing decisions are typically made, you know, after approval at the board level, which can take place in August or September, and then we initiate the purchasing, and then we try and exhaust the purchasing as quickly as possible to be in service to schools as quickly as possible. Now, on the other hand, the other part of your question involved the disposable, disposal, or what we call the e-waste process. So that, that program takes place throughout the year, whereas we purchase in sort of a finite window and exhaust the funds and get computers in schools' hands as quickly as possible on a five-year rotating basis, the e-waste program targets computers that are only seven years old or older. So we're actually renewing at a quicker pace than we're pulling computers from schools, if you can see that, that timeline basis. And, and it does happen year round. So for example, let's say a school has 10 unsupported computers like Chromebooks, or they have 10 iPads that were manufactured in 2014, or they have 10 damaged computers, or any combination of that inventory, they'll contact our asset manager, we'll contact or any combination of that inventory, they'll contact our asset manager, we'll contact the e-waste company, and then the e-waste company comes and picks up those those e-waste, those disposed computers. And then there's security protocols that we we have a signed contract with the e-waste company, and they do the data cleansing and wiping to ensure that our data privacy is intact. But overall, we purchase like in a in a small window, let's say from September through January until we exhaust the monies, but we're e-wasting constantly to try and make our, you know, our computer inventory as as performance-oriented as possible. Does that answer your question?
Almost, and maybe you said it, but just talk to me like an eighth grader. So when you take away the e-waste, now there's there's a void. So do you replace it? Or does it depend on, as you said, the size of the school, the student body, perhaps enrollment's gone down? That's really the core of what I'm getting at. You know, what you take away, do you replace at the same time?
In a historical context, we tried to begin the program five years ago in that way where we said, okay, here's 100 computers, please provide us 100 back. It was a tit-for-tat exchange. Now we're not in that space. Now we're not requiring, if we if we provide 100 computers to a school, we have no requirements, numerical requirements for e-waste. What we're looking for are seven years old or older, not Windows 11-upgradable, not supported or damaged. So to answer your question, I guess, is we don't, we're not taking computers and then exchanging another. We're trying to be in service to schools as immediately as possible. So we we give them their 100, and if they if some 40 meet our criteria for e-waste, that's the 40 we take. But it doesn't it doesn't happen at the same time. It's an ongoing process.
Okay, thank you. That helps. Questions, comments?
I have a question.
Trustee Hall.
I I could really use some clarity around the desktop computer versus the laptop computer in the classroom. I know I personally used a desktop in my classroom, and I know that we've gotten a few emails from teachers concerned about the that this this process that we're going through is that it's flipping them from taking the desktop away and that they're only being given a laptop. So if you could just clarify how that part of this program is working.
Yeah, happy to. Thank you, trustee Hall. So the strategic technology plan that was passed in in the fall and the winter of 2020 and 2021 identified mobility as the preferred choice for computers for both students and teachers. So the what happens is is we replace the the scope of the program is only laptops for teachers. There are installations around the district that I'm aware of where they use a desktop computer out of convenience that is wired into the interactive display, or it might be something that they use on the side to conduct their grading and their correspondence. But really, with the model selection of mobility or preference there for laptops, and then the budget constraints of the program were really oriented to, and we, you know, we've we're not in a space where we can say, we'll get you both. So we're selecting a single computer chassis or model or type for students and teachers, and it's a laptop, and that's what we can supply. Now, whatever the principal had, what we've done with the with the renewal program, the annual renewal program, is taken the budgetary obligation away from the principal. They no longer have to buy computers for all their teachers, and we didn't sweep their budgets in accordance with that. This is capital funded. So principals at their discretion could, over and above what we're providing in the scope of our program, provide a desktop or an additional computer, but that's at their discretion. That's not part of the scope of the program.
Thank you.
Trustee Westlake.
Thank you. So I'm I'm a little confused here. So you tell the school, we want all the computers that are five or seven years old or seven and possibly on down to five years old. And then they they give them to you. So if there's a shortage at that school, let's say you give them 50, 50 computers, and then they give you 75. So what happens with that that 25 gap? So were they should they have hung on to those 25 computers because there wasn't 25 to replace it? Or who's going in and taking the computers out? Because I mean, it happens.
So our e-waste, our our security standards require us to, in order for us to remain safe in this IT environment we find ourselves in, and if you look around the headlines in our local region here over the last 24 to 48 hours, you'll notice that there was an I, there's an I ongoing IT incident that involves the state and splashes on the rest of us. So in order to keep maintain a safe and secure computing environment, we have to remove computers that are seven years old or older, not any younger. We're not taking anything younger than seven years unless they're not Windows 11-upgradable, which means they didn't purchase them through our normal channels. They got them as donations, or they bought them through Best Buy using internal funding or something. But are the computers that we that have come through our product catalog that are seven years old or newer, we're not taking any of those. We're only taking computers that are seven years old or older, not Windows 11-upgradable, unsupported like Chromebooks or damaged computers. So in your example, if there is 75 computers that are in operation in that in that school, if those kids are actively using those computers and we only give them 50, that's a space that is a gap, and I recognize that. But we also need to ensure that we're in a safe environment so that threat actors don't take over the computer, take over the accounts, and and start to work from the inside and harm the district.
And I appreciate that. I'm just trying to, is there a way that principals could be maybe proactive at some point before this process is kind of kicking in? Or just, you know, maybe once a month, kind of see how many computers they're going to be down and be notifying you so you kind of have a an idea of a need at this school and a need at that school so it can kind of be, so it's not at the, you know, the last hour where here's 75, oh, great, here you get 50. That's I'm just, is there something to try and head off that gap?
What what you don't see, what occurs behind the scenes in IT is we have asset management folks and project management folks that are in constant communications with principals. So the Windows 11 announcement and identifying the exact computers in the district that are not Windows 11-upgradable has been, those communications have been ongoing to school principals, direct from our team to those principals since last October, October of 2024.
And then they tell you, I've got 20 or something?
We have, we have an inventory system that we developed as a result of the pandemic because we had no idea how many computers were in the district or where they were. So we developed an inventory tool that links to the purchase order system. And so it's it's exactly informed of how many computers have been purchased and onboarded in the district, feeds our systems, and we know all the way down to the serial number where that computer is and what its status is. If it's Windows 11-upgradable, if it's a Chromebook and no longer supported, those sort of details are identified by our asset managers and our project manager, and those communications are pushed directly to the principal. So a typical exchange would be our folks will inform the principal, you, we've identified 25 computers that are not Windows 11-upgradable or seven years older, older, or Chromebooks or whatever the case may be. You are welcome to to contribute any damaged computers when our e-waste vendor is here. So we might have identified 25 that are ready to go, and they'll give us an additional 25 because the screens are cracked, whatever the case may be, and we and we ship them to the e-waste vendor.
But do they tell you of those extra 25 ahead of time, or is it just kind of like the day of?
No, we we're we're in, we're very proactive in that space. We're communicating with the school principal. We've identified with our systems that these computers have to go. And as part of the ongoing refresh program, you know, we're giving them, you know, based on the enrollment, we're giving them 20% new computer, 20% new computers every year.
Uh huh, okay.
I don't know, I don't know. It doesn't seem like I've clarified.
No, no, it it does. I just, I wanted to kind of know the the policy. So the principals would, there's a process to tell you that, oh, by the way, we've got another 25 that are busted. So you guys know ahead of time about how many you're going to be getting.
Right. The the school principals in in the IT team are in constant communications about not only the the computers that are aged out and have to move on, but they also inform us, by the way, these 10 or this these five or these 20 are damaged. And so we note that in our inventory tool, and then they all go out and we remove them from inventory.
No, that that clarifies it perfectly, and I do appreciate the safety. I really do. I don't want to see us breached at all.
Okay, thank you. JJ, we have any public comment on item 3.04?
I have no cards for this.
Okay, outstanding. Any other comments, questions from the board? And if not?
I'm going to make that motion. I move the Board of Trustees approves the recommendation for the Capital Funding Protection Committee to approve the 25, 2025 slash 26, a major projects program in the amount of 2.22 point 7 million.
Second.
Motion from trustee. Yeah. Is that? Are we good? Okay, there we go. I have a motion from trustee Phoenix, second by trustee Nicolet. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for your time, folks. We'll move on. Item 3.05, this is a presentation and discussion to provide the Board of Trustees an overview of proposed revisions to strategic plan action steps for the 2025-26 school year this year and possible action to approve the proposed revisions and a one-year extension of strategic plan. This item is presentation and approval. We have our distinguished panel of Don Agnati, our chief academic officer. I'm so glad I have a script here. Dr. Mike Paul is our lead area superintendent. Dr. Paul Lamarcas is our chief student services officer, and the other handsome bald man in the room, Dr. Troy Parks, chief academic officer.
Equally back at you, Vice President Mayberry. All right. Good evening, afternoon. Superintendent Ernst and Board of Trustees, as recognized, I'm Troy Parks, secondary academic chief, and I am joined by Don Agnati, Dr. Paul Lamarcas, and Dr. Mike Paul. Today's presentation outlines proposed revisions to the 2025-26 strategic plan. Together, we will walk you through this, the rationale, the criteria, and the specific updates to ensure our strategic plan efforts remain aligned to student needs and our district priorities. Let's begin with a quick overview of our strategic plan. As you likely recall, it's built around five core goals, from ensuring a strong start for every child to empowering all learners for their future. These goals are supported by our foundational pillars and a central beam focused on safety and connectedness. This framework guides our work and ensures coherence across all initiatives. Here are our original 15 steps aligned to those five strategic plan goals. These steps have guided our work over the past year, and we've engaged in internal monitoring through status reports, leadership meetings, and deep data dives. As the Board of Trustees, you likely recall our six presentations around milestones and momentum where we provided you updates on these action steps throughout last year. These were used to impact our progress and assess our progress and impact. This process has informed our proposed revisions, and I'll turn it all now to over to Dr. Lamarcas.
Thank you, Dr. Parks. For the record, Paul Lamarcas, chief student services officer, thank you for the opportunity, Vice President Mayberry, Superintendent Ernst. So as Dr. Parks just shared, we've had these focal strategies in execution of strategic plan that have really been very helpful to us to maintain a focus. But as a continuous learning organization, we feel very important that we evaluate this every year. It's not as if the 15 or so action steps that were in that table he just showed is all we do. So we want to make sure we're focusing on the right things and doing a lot of work on the side. So in collaboration with Dr. Davidson in the Accountability Department, she developed a rubric. The academic leadership team used this rubric individually and then collectively to look at every strategy. You have the rubric and the scoring in your appendix materials. Just very briefly, we used four criteria in evaluating the existing actions. That was relative completion of our objectives. It was feasibility, meaning did we have budget to carry out what we needed to carry out, relative impact on students, as well as what we thought was the alignment between the action step and the stated goal. Similarly, we also used our criteria to introduce possible new strategies to be focused upon in the coming year. We didn't look at completion because we haven't, we're not there yet, but we did look at centrality, meaning alignment of the focused strategy to the goal. We looked at available budget to carry it out, and we also looked at impact on students. So here's the table that Dr. Parks showed a couple of slides back, but now you see some things in green font. Dr. Paul, Mr. Agnati, and myself, we're going to walk through each of these because these are recommendations for changes in terms of the focused strategies in execution of the strategic plan. And I'm going to kick us off. So here, we don't have any changes in goals one and five, but we do have changes in goals two, three, two, three, and four, and we'll take those in turn. So with 2.3, here we do have sort of the replacement of the fifth grade success plans with a focus on middle school transition events. So the middle school transition, as you know, is really critical to the success of our entire system, and it's been an area where we have had some emphasis in the last several years, and we want to continue that. And our fifth grade success plans in this previous year really fed into that process. So really, that the transition isn't a singular event, it's a process. It's an identification of the academic sort of milestones and the developmental milestones students need to achieve to be successful in middle school. It's then, in a culturally responsive way, communicating that to our families, which can include and will include events at schools where families come in, they're student-centered kind of events, students can express their desires, what they want in a middle middle school experience, families can ask questions, they can get comfortable with the school. We really think that this focus around middle school transition is going to aid us in terms of attendance as well as academic achievement. Turn it over to Dr. Paul.
Thank you very much, Vice President Mayberry, Superintendent Ernst, Board of Trustees. I'm going to go through quickly number 3.1 here. And when you take a look at 3.1, goal three was about safety and belonging. And with the previous strategic plan, you would notice that we were really not actually hitting school safety in particular. And so we wanted to make sure that we had goals in there that related directly to school safety. Now, the first thing that I want to point out when you look at the replaces category there on the left, it says volunteer services. Now, by no means are we going, are we saying family and school, family partnerships and community partnerships, we're just putting that off to the side, by no means. When Dr. Lamarcas speaks to 3.2 here in a second, we'll see where that's kind of put back into there a little bit. But there, you know, like with our Raptor Services, that's addressed, that has been addressed in part of the previous goals that's up and running in our school. So we are addressing that and continuing to do that. So I wanted to make sure that I put that right on the table right away, that we're not just pushing that off to the side. But in particular, when we're looking at this, we wanted to be very explicit in addressing school safety. So you can see there that we have enhancing the physical aspects of the school. There's where we have the single point of entry, the perimeter fencing, and those kinds of things are being put into there. Also, we're looking at engaging communities here. there that we have enhancing the physical aspects of the school. There's where we have the single point of entry, the perimeter fencing, and those kinds of things are being put into there. Also, we're looking at engaging communities here. Engaging community, working with capital projects and school police to have very strong communication in the design of our new schools and the design of the enhancing and remodeling of our schools for, you know, functional design of our buildings with the aspect of school safety in mind. So, that's very front and center when we're doing all of this, just to make sure that that, those aspects are not forgotten when we're doing that. So, that school safety aspect is there in the safety and belonging in, in Goal 3. So, we just want to make that explicit within the strategic plan. And I'll turn it over, or turn it back to Dr. Lamarcas.
And then I'll turn it over to Mr. Agnadi. So, as Dr. Paul mentioned, in this particular objective, 3.2, we're going to talk a little bit about community partnerships. And Superintendent Ernst has talked a lot about the need for student engagement. It's a major focus for our school district. Connectedness of students through multiple means is still a high priority for us, and it always will be a high priority for us. And one of the most important ways to engage students is to engage families and partner with families. As you know, when we talked to you in May, we do, we are experiencing a budget reduction with the Parent Teacher Home Visit Program. So, some of our initial objectives to continue to expand that, we're having to manage that. So, with that reduction, we don't want to take a highlight off of parent teacher home visits, but we're not going to be able to expand that program. So, our goal there will be to maintain our level of visits that you know that we have now. We have other family engagement efforts. We have our parent university work. We have our, our work with our family graduation advocates. We have worked through our native culture and education programming. And we want to bring those to you with a little bit more focus so you can see the other means by which we're engaging and partnering with families. Another point that I'll make, just very briefly, is that when we talk about connecting families, when we talk about increasing engagement, reducing absenteeism, we know we often hit barriers, and families experience barriers. We can't do this work alone. This is where we have to expand our community partnerships. We've talked with you guys on multiple occasions about some of those partnerships. We will again next month. So, we will be sharing with you over time increases to those partnerships, as well as we will be highlighting data that you have available to you in our, our warehouse, our big warehouse around family engagement.
All right. So, back over to me for Goal 3.3. So, in Goal 3.3 is about be, is looking to be adjusted to behavior systems in general. We were looking at 3.3 in the lens of help assisting school teams with climate and absenteeism data. Where, that is still going to be the crux of this goal, but we're expanding it more to the MTSS systems, the multi-tiered systems of support systems as a whole. With multi-tiered systems of support specifically, that is a foundational system that schools need to have in place for, for the success of a school. MTSS, that incorporates not just attendance, but it is a strong focus on behavior and academics as well. So, it's a whole system for a school to run successfully. And so, by incorporating MTSS, absolutely, we're still going to be focusing on attendance, but behavior is a huge aspect that comes into that as well, like I said. So, in looking at that and strengthening those systems, we're already off to a strong start with providing that. It is one of our three main focus priority areas for our district that we are, that we are engaging in. We have 35 of our schools right now already engaged in that focus priority that we're moving forward with, with building foundations and systems and structures focused on MTSS. So, we're well on our way into that with a rotating three-year, three-year priority. So, all schools will be hitting that. And even our schools that aren't in, our 35 schools that are in that focus priority, we're still providing an element of this training to all of our school administrators through our academy work all year long. So, we are having a major focus on this Goal 3.3 because we know how important the behavior aspects and helping our teachers and our principals with this system to address our behaviors at our school. So, that's a main focus. And with academics as well incorporated into this, more engaged students and academics, that helps behavior as well and not just strictly looking at behavior. So, it is an all-encompassing system that, that we are working and banking on to, to move forward with this. So, explicitly incorporating that into 3.3 is a major strategy for us going forward in our strategic plan. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Agnadi to move forward.
Okay, real quick, colleagues, everybody good? Questions, comments? Okay, we'll keep going. Mr. Agnadi?
Perfect. Thank you, Vice President Mayberry, Superintendent Ernst, Don Agnadi for the record, Chief Academic Officer. Excited to talk about Goal 4, the academic growth and achievement. When we looked at Goal 4, you see the Goal 4.3 is called out around professional learning communities. We really felt that that professional learning community work takes place in 4.1, where we're guaranteeing that equitable access to high-quality standards-aligned instruction. So, moving that and shifting that up to our teachers who are doing the work in PLCs around standards and replacing that with collaborative school supports. We have our collaborative schools that are identified. They're our highest need schools. So, really honing in on what support through leadership mentoring, professional learning, reading programming, and staffing can we provide to those collaborative schools. So, taking a little bit different approach, shifting the PLC work up, and then coming up with a new focus around the collaborative school supports. Moving forward, we also added in a 4.4. So, this is the one section that we added, a fourth one, around the English, English learner development model. We're seeing a lot of success with our English learner development model. We feel that this is critical, obviously, to put the support into place for providing targeted language instruction, supporting our staff with professional learning around those areas in language development. Also, too, the, the metric on this is the access performance. To give you a little bit of background on that, that's basically the WE to access for EL students. They're assessed in listening, speaking, reading, and writing K-12. So, we would use that measure to support and align this goal to benefit that group of students as well. Our ask on this for our strategic plan is an additional year of implementation. When we look at the, some of the strategies are already in place, but they're new within the past two years, and they need a refinement and expanded scope. Some strategies are moving from pilot to full implementation. We also have the efforts, these efforts take time to implement and have an effect on student achievement and student outcomes. So, what we're asking is 25-26, we implement the existing and revised strategies that we, that we've shared with you today, 26-27, but implement existing and revised strategies and begin building new strategic plan in collaboration with stakeholders. So, our superintendent recommendation in front of you is to approve the action step and metric revisions to the Washoe County School District Strategic Plan for 25-26 school year and approve a one-year extension of strategic plan ending in June of 2027.
Trustee Nicolet.
Thank you. I applaud everyone involved, including the trustees, for not putting this on the, on the shelf and just going about. It's been a dynamic process, as it should be. Adding an additional year to me is, is brilliant. It's the way it should be because we're never done. And, and this is a, this is a organic document and a, and a process that is every moment of every day. And thank you so much, and everybody involved. I know that we're many voices involved in this that came to the conclusion that we've got some things that are working. We've got some things that are accomplished. We've got some things that we need to do, and we need some more time. I just think it's brilliant, and I thank you for that.
From my perspective, thank you for the wonderful communication. I really appreciate how you have these two different slides, where you have a revised slide that, that mirrors the original slide with, with the new, with the new goals. It was really easy to read and really understanding, and, you know, you guys are the experts, not us. And so, I, I think this is really exciting, and I appreciate some of the, the, sort of the tweaks that have been made to fit really what continues to be the, the tone of, of this board's desire to continue to improve academic performance. And that means a lot of things to a lot of different people. Trustee Woodley.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So, I've been working in government for almost four decades, and I've never seen under a budget deficit where leadership says, we're going to enhance and we're going to move things around. I've always heard, what are we taking off the table? So, this is my first time ever seeing a presentation in a budget deficit where we're saying, we're going to enhance our strategic plan. I mean, I love the statement, Dr. Paul, strong communication with school police on infrastructure improvements. That's wonderful. That's beautiful. I loved that. I've always wanted that, and I'm so happy to hear that. But for you guys to be so nimble, not abandon the efforts, and adapt and overcome our deficiencies, this is, and then add an additional 4.4, this is, this is great. This is, this is wonderful. You guys fattened it up. You guys didn't trim it down. So, I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Stacking it up. I like that. Yeah. Trustee Phoenix.
Yeah, just for me, the, you're going back to that data-driven information and all the work that's going into all of it. And then you guys are deciphering all that, and you're seeing off of your experiences where it needs to go. And I like the middle school transition deal. You know, that's kind of a needed thing. I think when I went out and was visiting schools, we were talking about, you know, making that transition. I had a grandson that's had a hard time making that transition going into that. And some of the principals will say the same thing. So, taking that as a priority, put it into effect, that's a good deal. The other was, you heard about the behaviors. And we went around the schools and are talking about the same thing. It's about the behaviors. They're taking away from teaching time. So, addressing that and finding, using the data and information, trying to move forward is huge. And again, like the rest of the colleagues, you need an extra year to try to make this happen? Let's see what happens, okay? So, that's just my comment to you guys. Thank you.
Trustee Hall.
This is great. I, first of all, I wrote down that there's a new explicit goal for school safety. I don't know how we, we overlooked that before. I mean, everything was obviously addressing towards school safety, but I like the explicit goal. I have, I actually have a question about the metrics. I'm, I'm kind of making an assumption that the metrics that you have on these slides are just examples of the metrics and that you, knowing Dr. Davidson back there, that she's collecting many, many, many more metrics. And, and I specifically wanted to, to point out one in particular. And it, it had to do with the 3.1. It says that the on-time completion of projects is one of the metrics, but one of the goals and the core strategies was community engagement. And so, I just want to make sure that we're also collecting some data around the engagement process and like, who's coming to meetings? And how many people we're talking to and, and all of that. And I'm sure Dr. Davidson is on it, but I just kind of wanted to throw it out there to make sure that we're on, on board with that, that on-time completion is important. But if the goal is community engagement, that actually has nothing to do with on-time completion. So, I, I'm assuming that there's a much more detailed list, but I just wanted to, you know, put that on the record that, that we're, we are collecting more data than what's on this slide. So, not really a question, just a statement.
Good, good. That's fair. Good, good point. Thank you. Trustee Westlake.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys putting a parameter around it and, because people appreciate deadlines and, and want to know what the expectation is. But I, I agree with trustee Nicolet. This is, this is an ongoing. I just, I'm glad that everybody didn't say, oh, we did great. We're done, you know? And we're just keep looking forward to improve. I do like just to frame it with having the timeframe because people do look for that. But I just think it's wonderful that we're just moving forward. And in my, a year, you know, 14 months, 15 months, we're moving forward. That's what's important.
Thank you. Public comments?
I have no cards for this item.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion to approve item 3.05. Trustee Westlake.
Thank you. What's that?
She was ready to do it.
I'm sorry. I got to look over here. Okay.
I'm, thank you. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the action step and metric revisions to Washoe County School District Strategic Plan for the 20, 2025-26 school year and approves a one-year extension of strategic plan ending in June 2027.
Absolutely. Second.
Westlake for item 3.05, and a second by trustee Nicolet. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Great work. And take Monday off.
He thinks he's so funny.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Davidson.
Thank you.
All right. That's great. Thank you. All right. Item 3.06 is a presentation. I understand it's a brief presentation. Possible action to provide preliminary approval for the adoption of board policy 0200, district strategic plan, initiation of a 13-day public review and comment period. Our presenter is our Chief General Counsel, Neil Rembardo.
I hope you don't mind. I'm just going to present from here since this is going to be quick.
Please, please. Absolutely.
All right. So, as you just affirmed, moving forward with the strategic plan, we thought it would be nice, as you know, to have our new governance document series, which is our zero series, and our policies. Where we already have our non-discrimination policy, we thought it'd be good to have a strategic plan policy as well, just to kind of lay it out there for the community that this is where we're at. So, we created this. We, and so, we're asking that you approve it. And that's it. I don't know if there's a lot to add here.
I don't either. Any public comment for item 3.06?
I have no cards for this item.
Okay. Open this up for any discussion, possible motion. Trustee Woodley.
I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. President.
Clerk Woodley. I keep calling it. Forgive me, sir. Yeah, you can make a motion, Clerk Woodley.
I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval to the proposed adoption of board policy 0200, district strategic plan, and initiates a 13-day public review and comment period.
Trustee Phoenix.
Can I second that?
Okay. We got a motion from Clerk Woodley and a second from trustee Phoenix to approve item 3.06. Seeing no discussion. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Wonderful. Okay, we're on final approach. Thanks for being patient with me, friends. This is the time where we get reports, starting with our student representative, Maya Hartley. Ms. Hartley, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good.
Okay. Good still afternoon, everyone. So, our district Student Advisory Council, we have our first retreat tomorrow in the evening. So, that's when we'll make our plans and our goals for the year, but I don't have anything to report on that yet. This Monday, our TMCC Jump Start students started their classes. And I know many students are incredibly grateful for this opportunity to like, get ahead in their education. Many of my peers are trying to get their associates before they graduate high school, which is pretty cool. And these classes have actually enabled me to make my schedules fit because I would have had to give up some of my classes that I'm really dedicated to if I couldn't take online classes through TMCC. Some of the issues that we've been having have actually been with registering for these classes and paying for them. Because, um, since there's many levels of approval that students have to go through to be able to get into these classes, there's a lot of room for miscommunication. So, like, for instance, when I was registering for my calculus class, I had to submit my, my transcript. And so, I submitted my high school transcript through TMCC. And then I got emails back saying that they needed my college transcript. And so, I submitted my TMCC college transcript that didn't have what they needed for my prerequisites. And so, I had to contact Western Nevada College and then get that transcript submitted to them. And this whole thing took like 10 days. And I know one of my peers, she had to take a test to get her prerequisite for music theory. And her counselor had no idea that any of this was happening because it got like, lost in her emails. So, that took her a couple of days to work through, and she had to have many meetings. So, there's been a couple of issues with that throughout the schools. But overall, everything's gone really well. I've had a lot of people complimenting how great their teachers are and how the actual classes themselves are really beneficial.
Thank you. Yes, please go ahead, Superintendent.
Maya, thank you very much. That's exactly the type of representation we appreciate from you as a member of the board here, as our student representative. We'll definitely look into some of the issues that you mentioned relative to transcripts and overall enrollment because you think about what an exciting opportunity is for our high school students to be able to graduate, not only with a high school diploma, but also an associate's degree from college. And so, when we're able to reduce some of those barriers and make these processes a little bit easier, we think that's going to benefit you. So, really appreciate you sharing that with us tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent Ernst. And thank you, Ms. Hartley. Good to see you. We're going to move on. Item 4.02, this is our board reports. Each trustee has three minutes to provide the community with an update on the activities related to the school district. And we'll start with trustee Nicolet. And we'll start with trustee Nicolet.
Yes, happy to. And I wanna, I wanna say to Maya trustee, student trustee, your voice is very powerful, and that was just a beautiful example of, of how we really deeply care, and you are, you're very important. You're all very important, and your voice is, is powerful. And thank you for that. I'm gonna do something I've never done before, but I'm gonna applaud JJ and Clerk Woodley. Every time I review the minutes, I'm reminded of when I was clerk and how that is really tough work. It's a deep, only during the meeting, but after the meeting, and I really applaud you for that. And you're very timely. I remember a time when we were way far behind, just because we were still trying to figure it out. You guys are spot on, and thank you for that. You are rocking it. I did the Pat Baker Park Trainer Middle School Walk to School. It was safe routes, and they called it the Walking School Bus. With my fellow trustees, we walked from Pat Baker Park to Trainer Middle School. I had the wonderful time talking to one of the students, and man, it's all about those students, right? We love it. I spent the morning with Richard Clark and his government class, all seniors, with Judge Kaddish, Commissioner Garcia, and Public Administrator Nicole Klitsky. And we shared what we do as elected officials. And I also left them with BP 5700 and BP 5150, so that they could understand how our work directly impacts them, and their voice is extremely important. Cue up the, there it is. So Monday, last Monday, we went up to Incline to visit the schools up there. They start a week later. And then, of course, kindergarten also starts a week later. And I just wanted to share this with you, that here's, other than the students and the employees, here's one of the gifts of being a trustee, a beautiful view on your way up to, to Lake Tahoe to visit the schools. Thank you, JJ. I went to the Champions for Change Breakfast, and I delivered the data book from the Nevada Child and Family Data Book to our superintendent and to our wonderful researcher, Dr. Laura Davidson. It, my gift to you, and I want to end with a quote from Miriam Wright Edelman, "Education is for improving the lives of others and for leaving your community and the world a better place." And Maya, you're already doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Nicolet. Trustee Woodley.
All right, thank you. I had a prior family commitment the past two weeks, so wasn't able to go out much. But I did get to participate with my fellow trustees, JJ and Dr. Nicolet, as we visited Trainer Middle School, and we did that walk from the park. And I just want to give kudos to Principal Dugan. She's doing a really good job getting those kids motivated. And next time, I'll eat one of those donuts. I didn't grab one, but I will next time. And then I also had the privilege of attending the Art of Childhood with Children's Cabinet, also with some of my fellow board members. That was a great event, saw some beautiful, positive stories. Children's Cabinet is doing some good work, God's work out there. So that's pretty much all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Woodley. Trustee Westlake.
Thank you. Not super busy, but it'll be gearing up. I also attended the Children's Cabinet Art of Childhood fundraiser and what they're doing in the community. I mean, it says Children's Cabinet, but they support families. And it's just amazing, the work that they put in to make sure that they're secure in their funding, so that they can go out and, and help, help families. And in turn, then that helps, helps our kids. So that was a beautiful, beautiful evening. And then I just, I want to mention briefly, but please, anyone who's interested, email me first if you're interested, so that I can give you the, the times, because you know, weather, some, maybe it's gonna get canceled, who knows? But Assembly Member, thank you for giving me the proper term, I would've messed that up. Assembly Member Heather Golding is putting on Sun Valley Cleanup on the 13th, which I plan, I, I love my, my area, Sun Valley, and my people over there. They're gonna be doing a cleanup there, so, but emailed me to make sure if you're interested in, in helping, so that I can email you back and give you the times. I'm not exactly sure of the times, but it is on September 13th. And then I can also tell you, give you thumbs up, that it's still a go. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Westlake, very much. Trustee Hall.
All right. I think we, we all mostly kind of let the schools have a few weeks, but several of us did attend the first day of kindergarten. Dr. Nicolet wore two hats that day. She was Nana Di and Trustee Di at the, that morning, which was kind of fun to see you in your element like that as well. And then we all headed up the hill, and as you saw those beautiful pictures, it was a gorgeous day in Incline, and we got to see the really, really great work that our teachers are, are doing in our Incline schools. And, and I just want to shout out our teachers in Incline, because they are such small schools, they all wear multiple hats. And they, that is a, that is something that we see in all of our rural schools in Nevada, and I work across the state in my day job. And, and we see that a lot. And I just want to shout out those teachers for doing the extra bit. Principal Cahill shared with us some incredible news about their, you know, test scores and their, their attendance rates and all of that. And a lot of that has to do with the culture that they create there in the community, because they all wear so many hats. So shout out to, to them. And then the other thing that I did over these last two weeks is I attended the, the committee that I'm on, which is the Debt Management Commission. And something just to report is that every year, the Debt Management Commission sets its priorities amongst all of the entities. And so before any entity can go into debt, it has to be gauged against certain priorities. And education was at the top, and it was a unanimous vote that education has to be one of the priorities for any kind of funding through the Debt Management Commission. So basically, what that means is any kind of proposed debt that a city or a county's gonna take on, or any kind of tax that they are going to propose, they have to go before this committee. And education and a couple of other things have to be a priority. So if there's two, two cities that say, "We want to take this piece of tax money," education's gonna be at the top priority over something else, which I think is really important for us all to know, that it's not just us that care about it. Our whole community really cares about making sure our children are educated. So that's a really interesting committee to be on, and I'm, I'm enjoying it. So lots to learn about taxes. Who knew? That's it.
Great. Thank you, trustee Hall. Trustee Phoenix.
All right. I too also participated in the walk-a-bus program at Trainer Middle School. And the idea there was to, you know, get the sixth graders together and to make new friends, and so that, you know, it's not so intimidating going to school. We picked them up along the way. I wanted to point out that the staff here was the one that came up with the data to figure out where, within a two-mile radius, a lot of students don't want to, you know, either late to school, or they're counted late, or they just don't make it at all. So they wanted to try to encourage all of that. And so it's, kudos go out to the, the staff over there at Trainer Middle School. The other is the 20th year anniversary with Jesse Hall Elementary School. It opened in 2006, August 20, 2006. And in the middle there, we have Janine O, who was the first principal who was brought back to this assembly. And, and then the original staff that was hired in '06, there's only seven that are remaining. And so if you haven't been to a elementary school assembly in a while, that place is rocking. That cafeteria is just going to town. It is out of control. But it was great, great energy. They're gonna be celebrating every month, doing something special over there at Jesse Hall. And then the last thing for me was that I listened in to the, the Nevada Department of Education, Indian Education Meeting from leaders throughout the state. And one of which goes, big kudos goes out to Fawn Hunter and her director, Delisa Crane. They do a great job collaborating and putting things together, and they have their objectives and things that they're looking at, not just here in Washoe County, but, you know, across the state where they're trying to implement these things. And, you know, Washoe County continues to lead the way. And so I just want to give them their kudos wherever it's needed. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you, trustee Phoenix. I don't have a lot to add. I'm gonna go ahead and pass on mine. I know we have folks in the audience that want to provide public comment. We'll move to item 4.03, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Vice President Mayberry. As others have mentioned, it's been great to have kids back in school. We are now, this is already our third week of school, and things are up and moving really, in a really positive way. Had a chance to visit many classrooms, and it is really encouraging to see some of the instruction that's taking place in our classrooms. We're really all about improving academic outcomes for our students, and when we have an opportunity to see some of the instruction that's occurring, it's really uplifting to see what kind of thought our teachers are putting in and what kind of instruction they're providing for our students. Specifically, was over at Hers Middle School, Huff Acre Elementary School, really, really productive visits. And so that was really good. And then one of the things in this position is we're always looking to build bridges and community partnerships. Recently met with Northern Nevada Literacy Council as we continue to find and identify ways to support kids on all different pathways they may be taking forward. And so we're into some preliminary work and looking at some possibilities, but it's always a, a nice something when we're working together with our community partners for the benefit of our students. So lots of good things happening here in Week Three, and I'll yield the rest of my time.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent Ernst. We'll go to our closing items. Item 5.01 is public comment. JJ.
Michael Echloff.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Washoe County School Board members. My, for the record, my name is Heyssus Garabe. I'm a business agent, union rep, and also an organizer for Carpenter Local 971 here in Reno, Nevada. I'm here to enlighten you all for this Maplewood Shop program, which is making a, a hands-on learning cool game. This curriculum is scalable, yet affordable with starter and mini programs. It's tailored for elementary, middle, and high schools. Not only is this curriculum rewarding, it helps to build life skills, problem solving, and camaraderie. This curriculum is not only engaging, but it helps promote increased attendance. Shared tools help keep school costs down. There are no power tools involved. It's a nationally recognized curriculum across 17 states. Nearby Lyon County School District is running this program this year. This program can also be used in high schools without CTE programs. It's a pathway to apprenticeship, college, or workforce, and opens the door to all trades. And I will keep that short and sweet, and I'll pass it on to Michael now.
Thank you. Hi. So Superintendent, Vice President, trustees, thank you for your service and your intentionality. We all want our youth to demonstrate collaboration, critical thinking, communication, creativity, and character. My name is Michael Schloff, and as a student, I was not able to sit still. And it didn't mean I was smart, didn't mean I was dumb, just mean I wasn't good at sitting still. And a lot of students everywhere, and I'm sure here, are the same. And what we found, surprisingly, is that this woodworking program is an incredible vehicle at solving many of your strategic goals, 2.1, 2.3, 5.1, 2.3, et cetera, all at once, because it incorporates social-emotional learning, it incorporates hands-on math. Lyon County did a pilot last year, and this year, they're rolling it out to all five middle schools, because it worked so well. And it, it's especially the kids that need it. It's the ones that, like me, were not good at sitting still, and they feel punished for being in class. And so it's a vehicle and a way to save money, because this one intervention can span multiple points at once. So I, I want to keep it short, but also, you know, as you think about CT for All, it's great with neurodiverse students, and we would love to have you join us tomorrow at the Carpenter's Training Center, also on Zoom, to learn more about it. You kind of have to see it to experience it, and there's materials for each of you as well. Thank you so much for your consideration, and we're grateful to be here. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. We appreciate it. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. Okay, the next meeting, the next meeting announcement is September 9th, 2025. We'll be on our way to fall. Having no other business, I will adjourn the meeting at, looks like it's 5:08. Thank you all very much for your patience, colleagues. We'll see you in a couple weeks.